Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Boca Raton City Council. It is Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. Our first item of business is the invocation which I will deliver. Let us give thanks to all of those who served to protect our city, state, and nation, including the first responders and other public safety personnel who are working now across the state as Hurricane Milton approaches and as we pray for their safety and the safety of all in the storm's path. As always, may we find the wisdom to govern among conflicting interests and issues, the ability to discern the true needs of the residents of Boca Raton, and the grace to work together in harmony for our great city. Thank you. Now please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Drucker.
Here.
Councilmember Nakliss.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thankful to be here.
Councilmember Wichter.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, I understand we have one amendment to the agenda, item 14-F.
Yes, we're proposing to amend the agenda to add to the introduction of ordinances, item F, ordinance number 5712.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any other amendments to the agenda? Then we'll entertain a motion to add item 14-F, as item 14-F, ordinance 5712. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We'll give that to Mr. Wichter, a second to Ms. Drucker. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll take that up at 14-F. We'll now proceed to review of the minutes. We have four sets of minutes, the special meeting of September 23rd, the workshop meeting of September 23rd, the city council final budget meeting of September 23rd, and the regular meeting of September 24th, 2024. Are there any corrections or changes? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to adopt all sets of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved. We have no proclamations nor presentations tonight, so we'll turn to board appointments. At first, I'll ask if any member of the public wishes to comment only on board appointments. We will have public comment on each of the agenda items and public requests later. Seeing no one come forward, we'll entertain any applicants here for the Civil Service Board. We may have one in the audience tonight. Any applicants for the Civil Service Board? All right, seeing none, councilmembers, we have one vacancy. Do I hear a motion? Ms. Drucker.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Lisa Mulhall to the Civil Service Board.
Just a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very well. We'll turn to the community advisory panel. Any applicants present? I don't believe so. Councilmembers, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, go ahead, please. I was gonna move that we appoint Lorraine Blank as, I think it's the term expiring March 2027, to the community advisory panel.
A second.
A second by Ms. Nakliss. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 She's appointed. We have no applicant still for the environmental advisory board, nor the permitting and construction review board. Is that correct, Ms. Simmons?
Correct.
We'll take those appointments up at a future date. We'll now turn to item eight, responses to workshop information requests. Mr. Brown?
I don't have anything from yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll turn to the consent agenda. Would any councilmember wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, would any member of the public wish to comment on the consent agenda only? Again, we'll have the items, the other agenda items will be heard following the consent agenda. Seeing no one come forward, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wichter.
Second.
Ms. Drucker, thank you. Any further discussion? And seeing none, Ms. Simmons, please.
Drucker.
Yes.
Nakliss.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Wichter.
Yes.
Singer.
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Very well, thank you. We'll now turn to item 10, quasi judicial and related public hearings. We have two tonight. The first is Resolution 104-2024. And Ms. Simmons, would you please read the title?
Resolution 104, 2024. A resolution of the city of Boca Raton considering for the approximately 11.87 acre property generally located at 1800 North Military Trail, an amendment to an approved site plan, planning and zoning board resolution number 05-29, as amended by resolution number 07-21, for a commercial industrial multifamily development, C-I-M-D, to authorize the construction of a new six-story, 295-unit multifamily residential building, including 10% affordable and 5% workforce housing units and related site improvements, providing for appeal or providing an effective date.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Kayla to review the quasi judicial procedure that will govern tonight's public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In accordance with the rules of the city council, any applicant or individual speaking tonight on item 10A shall disclose at the commencement or continuing to the public hearing any payment or consideration for an agreement to support or withhold support for the application. A copy of the rules are attached to the, govern this hearing are attached to the agenda and can be obtained from the city clerk.
Thank you. At this point, I'll ask councilmembers if they have any ex parte communications they wish to disclose. I'll start on my left with Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Going back several years, I've had discussions with David Abers. He's a representative of the applicant regarding the merits of this project. I had a meeting last week with Mr. Abers and counsel for the applicant, Ms. Zacharitis, regarding the merits of the application. And I had discussions today with Bonnie Miskel and Lon Tabachnik regarding some portion of the application here, specifically the form related to that the renter for a proposed unit here would have to fill out. And I believe that concludes my ex parte communications.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nakliss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I've also had multiple meetings over the last couple of years with David Abers and Ellie Zacharitis, including one meeting this morning. And I had a brief call with Bonnie Miskel regarding the application declaration also today. I have also visited the site and watched P&amp;Z meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had several meetings throughout the process with Mr. Abers and with his representative, Ellie Zacharitis. I had a meeting last week on Tuesday with both parties. I received a call today from Bonnie Miskel, leaving me a detailed message about the application. We played phone tag, we never connected, and anything else related to this project would be included in the file. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wichter.
Thank you. Like my colleagues, I've had conversations with Mr. Abers throughout the process and Ms. Zacharitis, and a specific meeting about the project generally last week with Mr. Abers and Ms. Zacharitis, and this afternoon briefly also with Ms. Miskel and Mr. Tabachnik generally about the, about the form of income verification.
Thank you. And I, like my colleagues, have had numerous conversations over the years with David Abers, representative of the applicant, Ellie Zacharitis, counsel for the applicant, received some emails, in fact traded emails this afternoon with David Abers. Bonnie Miskel also, counsel for the applicant, called me this afternoon, but I let her know that I'd responded to Mr. Abers. And I've visited the site, like I'm sure all of us have over the years, and other email communications have been in the city's file, so they've already been disclosed. That concludes my disclosures. So if there's nothing further, we'll ask anyone who wishes to speak on this matter to please rise so the clerk can administer the oath.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that any testimony you may give before this public hearing will be truthful and accurate?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter Begovic, Senior Planner with the Development Services Department, will make the presentation on item number 10A, Resolution 104, 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And good evening, Mayor Singer and members of the city council. My name is Peter Begovic for Development Services, and I'll be presenting the Boca Center Residential Commercial Industrial Multifamily Development at 1800 North Military Trail. The applicant's requesting to amend a previously approved site plan that authorized development of an existing four-story, 50-foot-tall, 149,500-square-foot office building with a four-level parking structure to approve a new, the construction of a new commercial industrial multifamily development, or C-I-M-D, to authorize the construction of a new 363,851-square-foot, six-story, 66-foot-tall, 295-unit multifamily residential building, including a five-level integrated parking structure, with 10% of the units as affordable housing and an additional 5% of the units as workforce housing, along with other associated site improvements. On February 13th, 2024, the city council approved ordinance number 5684, providing for the construction of up to 2,500 dwelling units, including affordable and potentially workforce housing units in certain commercial and industrial zoning districts located in the planned mobility, future land use category. Specifically ordinance number 5684, which established eligibility requirements, development standards, and approval procedures for CIMDs. If approved, this project would utilize 295 of the 2,500-unit bank permitted for CIMDs citywide pursuant to Section 28, 1645 of the Code of Ordinances. The project will be located on the vacant northern portion of the approximately 11.8 acre property located at 1800 North Military Trail, just east of the shops at Boca Center. The property is owned professional office and industrial, P.O. and I, and has a future land use designation of planned mobility, with the exception of 1.4 acres of environmental preserves on the site, to which the conservation land use designation has been applied. The overall site plan, which is on the screen, shows that the proposed multifamily residential building and integrated parking structure located north of, is located north of the existing office building. Eight parallel parking spaces will be added to the existing driveway on the site, and the existing conservation easement and scrub preserve area are proposed to remain on-site. The proposed multifamily residential building includes a clubhouse and lounge, co-working space, and a gym on the first floor that includes a mezzanine that's also accessible from the second floor. Two outdoor pickleball courts are also accessible from the second floor. An outdoor area with covered seating areas and a planter is proposed on the sixth floor. A pool pavilion and outdoor kitchen is proposed at ground level on the south side of the The proposed pedestrian circulation and access is comprised of an internal walkway system that is connected to the shared use path network at three locations, two connecting the new multifamily residential building and one connecting the existing office building. The site provides good connectivity between the two buildings, providing a direct pedestrian connection for somebody who might work and live on the site. The pedestrian, the project will add a connection to the shops at Boca Center near the building, near the new building, and eliminate an existing connection that connects to the drive-through lanes at McDonald's. As part of this development approval, the applicant is extending the existing eight-foot-wide shared use path along the east property line to curve to the west along the northern property line to connect the existing sidewalk network and a planned extension of the shared use path north of the shops at Boca Point, which was approved in July. The applicant coordinated with the shops at Boca Point to provide two direct pedestrian connections to the property, one near Military Trail and a second further east. Connecting the existing shared use path to North Military Trail will make the existing shared use pathway accessible to the public and is a significant public benefit associated with this application. Since the property's driveway encompasses all of the application, all the project's frontage on North Military Trail, adding additional street trees was not possible as part of this project. CIMDs require a minimum of 25,000 square feet of office, restaurant, and/or retail, sales, or services within a quarter mile, with a minimum of 10,000 square feet being restaurant and/or retail sales or service. At least 262,426 square feet of office, restaurant, and retail sales or services exist within that quarter mile. And 149,500 of that is the existing office building with approximately 112,926 square feet being restaurant or retail sales or services located at the shops at Boca Center that directly above the project, which far exceeds the minimum requirements. The proposed site plan introduces the six-story, 66-foot-tall contemporary multifamily residential building with the five-level integrated parking structure onto its site with the existing office building and four-level parking structure. This elevation is the one that would face the shops at Boca Center, the one at the top. These are the elevations that would face east towards the railroad tracks and I-95, and then the south elevation on the bottom corner would face the existing office building. This is a rendering of the west elevation of the proposed building. This is the elevation that would be just north of the existing office building. And this is a photo of the west elevation of the existing office building, which would be just south of the previous slide. As you can see, the existing office building is compatible with the proposed residential For the workforce and affordable units, what do the rents look like? Well, rents are based on actual income adjusted by household size and number of bedrooms. To qualify for an affordable unit, a household's income can be up to 120% of area median income, or AMI, while workforce unit is for those with an income up to 140% of AMI. The actual income and rent limits are based on the most current annual median income figures as published by the Florida Housing Finance Corporation and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the West Palm Beach, Boca Raton area. For example, based on 2024 income and rent limits for Palm Beach County, a one-person household making $90,000 a year, oh, oh, sorry.
Backwards.
Thank you. That's, all right, anyway. Making $90,000 a year or 120% of AMI, renting in efficiency, would qualify for an affordable unit and pay $2,250 per month in rent, while the same household making $105,000 a year or 140% of area median income qualifies for a workforce unit and would pay $2,625 per month. The covenants or regulations do not prevent the owner, at their option, from renting a unit to a household that makes less than 120 or 140% income limits for the affordable or workforce units. In this case, an example of a one-person household making $60,000 or 80% of AMI would pay $1,500 a month for an affordable or workforce unit. The affordable and workforce covenant would be in place for 30 years. After 30 years, the affordable and workforce units may be rented or sold at market rates. The project will provide an additional 295 rental dwelling units in the city with 30% affordable housing units, I'm sorry, with 30 affordable housing units and 15 workforce housing units. The project is consistent and compatible with the adjacent land uses, project as designed, supports the goals, objectives, and policies in the comprehensive plan related to pedestrian, bicycle, and transit mobility, and the project complies with all code requirements. Last week, the applicant requested minor changes to the resolution to clarify condition five to give the applicant more flexibility when working with Palm Beach County for permitting requirements and approvals. Staff agrees with the modification, and a copy of the updated resolution has been provided to you. The applicant also has issues regarding the affordability covenant, specifically the third-party verification process, and the ability of the city to enter individual units for the purposes of compliance or enforcement. You've been provided with an updated affordability covenant that addresses these concerns, and we also have staff available tonight to answer any specific questions you have regarding the affordability covenant or proposed changes thereto. At their September 5th, 2024, meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval at a vote of five to zero, and Development Services Department recommends approval of the site plan amendment with a commercial industrial multifamily development. And with that, I thank you and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Begovic. Councilmembers, any questions? Mr. Wichter.
Thank you very much. Pursuant to our new C-I-M-D ordinance and the Live Local Act, my understanding is this is the first project that is before this council for approval under the ordinance. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so, sometimes it's good to be first, and sometimes there might be some bumps in the road. Can you briefly explain, and I know Mr. Shad has said so in the past too, have there been any challenges, Mr. Shad, by the staff to kind of interpret the new ordinance from us, Live Local Act, what it means, the affordability requirements, the deed restriction and whatnot? Has, you know, are there, are the things that you're doing on the fly because it's the first one, and we're trying to put in a system that will go for the other, the other projects that are in queue behind this one?
Brandon Shad, Development Services Director. So we drafted the affordability covenant, I want to say from scratch, obviously we're using other examples to try to get the best ideas. It's been challenging, yes. I'm not sure what the question is beyond that.
Meaning that there's a bunch of, there are several issues that are coming up that are, you know, that, that you're doing for the first time, because there is no set plan in place that you are now trying to create a, you and your team are trying to create a path, a path for all the other applicants that will go through a similar way, and so that's, you're creating new things, the affordability covenant, the application process, those kinds of, those kinds of things.
Yes.
Yes, no. And so it's new, but the idea is if we're establishing a mechanism here and throughout that we'd like to continue using those in the future for every project that comes here.
Yes.
But there might be changes if, depending on what we do today and whatnot, there could always be changes that we'd like to institute there.
Sure. So most of our site plan approvals have instruments to be recorded that go along with them, and those come to the Planning and Zoning Board or to the city council. And sometimes applicants ask for changes to those standard templates, and sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't, so that same process could happen in these cases as well. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilmembers, further questions? Ms. Nakliss.
Just two quick questions. You said this was the new, the amended declaration that we were just given?
Yes, that's, that's the amended one.
Can you just, I don't see any strike throughs, but unless I'm missing them, what was amended?
This is the clean version.
Oh, okay.
I have some additional slides I could pull up.
Okay.
With highlighting, if you want to see them.
Okay, and two quick questions, just to clarify. So who verifies the income and monitors the, the requirements over the 30 years? Is it the city or the owner?
The city would, would monitor it.
Let me clarify. So it's the responsibility of the property owner to do, to take the applications and to sort of verify, I guess would be the word, all the information that's given to them. Like any other requirement of the code, it's the, the individual's responsibility to comply, but obviously we have an enforcement role as well.
Okay, thank you. And in this new declaration, was there anything about when the city may enter the unit? Was there anything changed?
No changes to that provision since, fairly certain since the version that was in the agenda backup.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor Singer. So a couple of questions, and I want to ask these before we have the applicant come up and we hear from the, from the audience. So when we started this process of approving our ordinance, it's been a year ago, maybe longer, it took us a while to approve the ordinance, we had an open forum where we invited a lot of the applicants to come in and present their projects, and we had all these disclosures, et cetera, et cetera. Have any of those applicants in the past, even though these are not applications before us, and my question is more on the application, not the project, so I want to leave the project aside, have we received any input from all those individuals that were a part of that affordable housing? We called it, I think, a symposium on this current DEC application?
Just today, I received a voicemail, or a phone message from Bonnie Miskel on the subject, and I, you know, tried to return her call several times and didn't reach her, but other than that...
Is there, just out of curiosity, and this is just, just the way that I process things, we had these open conversations during the symposium with multiple parties. I, it would have made, to me, someone like me that thinks like, you know, the extra step, maybe had, you know, sent these out to the other parties that might be involved at some point in submitting affordable housing projects. So that wasn't done, correct?
No, so we've been working on this and, you know, like many things, it kind of, we, we finish it when we have to because we have so many priorities, so we didn't have that opportunity.
A follow-up question, if I may. How long has the applicant have this current application or this current covenant of restriction? When was this first presented to the applicant?
Not certain. I mean, a similar version a couple of weeks before the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and then there's been, you know, some changes in recent days.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? All right. No councilmembers have further questions? We'll open up the public hearing on this matter. We'll, we'll invite the applicant first to come first. They'll have up to 20 minutes, although they may not need it. Please give your name and address, Ms. Zacharitis.
Good evening, Ellie Zacharitis, 14 Southeast 4th Street. Thank you, staff, very much. It's been a long week. Mr. Keeler, Peter, Brandon, thank you for working with us. Ms. Drucker, the first time we saw this declaration, excuse me, was in the Planning and Zoning Board packet, which came out the Friday before the Thursday P&amp;Z meeting. That was the first time we saw it. Okay, so I have a very, very brief presentation. First and foremost, again, thank you, staff, for working so diligently with us. I am ridiculously proud that we are finally here with our first C-I-M-D project that will be providing 45 affordable and workforce housing units to our beautiful city. And not to mention, this project has no asks. We have no technical deviations, we have no variances. I won't go through this. Peter did an excellent job. Here is an updated landscape plan that really highlights the pathway on the east, a 15-foot multi-use pathway that currently is a path that goes to nowhere. We are now extending it at the clever request of the city, which we really appreciated that request. We are extending it and connecting it to Military Trail. So now it actually will go somewhere and hopefully really will be utilized. Just really quickly, these are the primary regulations within the C-I-M-D ordinance, ordinance 5684. Just very briefly, we pretty much double open space. This is truly a perfect location. If you recall, you need to be within a quarter mile of 25,000 square feet of non-residential, of a commercial component, of which 10,000 square feet has to be retail or restaurant. We have over 100,000 square feet of restaurant and retail, and not within a quarter mile, but literally abutting us, and hundreds of square feet of office and hotels and the like. And of course, we are within that quarter mile to mass transit. We meet or exceed setbacks and landscape buffers. If you recall, the C-I-M-D allows you to go up to 85 feet. We are... We are proposing 66 feet, again, not maximizing development on the site. We do have our equivalency factor to ensure that every, 10% of every one-bedroom, two-bedroom or three-bedroom will have that affordable and similarly 5% of each kind will also be The C I M D allows 10% reduction in parking. You can go up to 20% if you meet certain criteria. We did not avail ourselves of the 20% and we're actually under the 10%. So, we have ample parking on site. We meet density and F A R. We far exceed the minimum square footage of the units within the code. As you can see in the middle, an efficiency is a minimum of 400 square feet. Our smallest unit is 520 and our largest unit is 1,400 square feet. Staff recommends approval and with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Abers to say a few words. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Abers, N A D G, 360 South Rosemary Avenue, Suite 400, West Palm Beach, Florida. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council and Staff, I want to echo Mrs. Zacharitis' comments about how proud we are to be the first C I M D before you. This has been a lot of work to get here, but countless hours of work by staff to get ordinance 5684 passed and also countless hours of work over the past year or so to get our application to where it is today. Mrs. Zacharitis touched on the location briefly, but I just wanted to expand on it because I think it's worthwhile. Firstly, we are proximate to multiple methods of transportation. Within a mile radius, we have Town Center Mall, over a million and a half square feet of office, hotels, grocery stores, shopping and restaurants, something that's very unique for a newer apartment project in the city of Boca. Within a five-minute drive or a 10-minute bike, largely because I was inspired by many of you and have biked the area extensively, we are within that range from F A U, Boca High, Boca Middle, Blue Lake, Lynn University, Don Estrich, Verde Elementary, Boca Regional Hospital and multiple city parks. There has been no residential construction in this area since the early 90s and no rental product since the 80s. Why I mention this is because of how unique an opportunity this is to add multifamily and workforce housing to a main hub within all of Palm Beach County. It's becoming increasingly difficult due to land constraints to create a live-work-play environment, which is the gold standard of urban planning. We are fortunate enough to already have a significant productive work and play at this location. As you can see in our renderings, which I'll pull up briefly, we are also eager to deliver a high-end condo-level product to the rental space within Boca. Given Glades in 95 is the gateway, one of the gateways to the city of Boca, we want to develop that a project that we and the city will be proud of for the long term. We want to provide a few examples of what we mean by this. It has been historically atypical for multifamily projects, really anywhere but here in Boca, to have something like glass balconies. It's something you typically see at higher-end condo projects in East Boca. This not only elevates the project, but again, provides that new level of residential to the city. As mentioned in the staff report, we are also providing a rooftop amenity deck for residents only that will double as a lounge and alfresco dining with shaded areas for year-round use, something that we're really excited to provide. Bottom line, we want, we plan to deliver a project that will stand the test of time and is best-in-class. It's what we do as a company. Lastly, I know there has been some discussions on the restrictive covenant being recorded. I just wanted to make, mention that we've been working with staff on it over the past week. We think we're going to continue to work on it to fine-tune it so that it works for everybody. And again, it's a condition of approval that it's required prior to bill, recorded prior to building permit, which call it six to nine months from now, so we have time to fine-tune the document and make sure that everybody's comfortable with it. Appreciate your time and here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council members, any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. I've gotten two cards on this. I'm not sure both individuals were sworn, Lon Tabachnik and Jonathan Ungin. If you haven't been sworn, the clerical of the oath before you speak, please come forward. Please proceed, Mr. Tabachnik.
Yes, thank you, Lon Tabachnik.
Address, please.
17605 Scarsdale Way, Boca Raton.
Thank you.
I just want to say we're fully supportive of this project. We worked with city staff and the council on drafting this ordinance over the last two years. Our issues are with the declaration of covenants and restrictions. Although we participated in the drafting of the ordinance, we had zero participation in the drafting or suggestions for this document. We build affordable housing and workforce housing all over the state and this is one of the most onerous documents that we have ever seen in any of our jurisdictions and specifically in Palm Beach County. We'd like to have the opportunity to sit with staff and work with them through some of the things that I think are going to be both difficult for us as developers and leasing agents to implement, as well as city staff to enforce. There's no mechanism in here on the enforcement side for us to object to certain requests from the city or to adjudicate any issues or problems. These forms are based on a tax credit type of project where you have government assistance, you have bonds, or you're, you're getting some type of subsidy. The ordinance is an income-based ordinance. The C I M D ordinance is based on income, 120% or 140% of the income. It says right in the, in the drafting, income of 120% or 140%. You're asking us in here to verify assets, determine values of people's assets, go to third-party verifications where we don't necessarily have the ability of perfecting that in a timely fashion. We normally have our applicants for workforce housing approved within 72 hours from them filling out and delivering us all the forms. This process would take weeks, if not months, because we don't have control over those third-party verification systems. So, I, I don't want to go line by line. I just feel we should have the opportunity to participate with city staff to help drafting the covenant that is workable both for the developer and the owner of the property, as well as the city to implement it. We're not looking to do something wrong, but we want it to be something that's easy for the applicant, the workforce or the affordable housing applicant to provide his income, his pay stub, his bank statement, his 1040 form. By providing those three items, everything you need is on there. And an assigned IRS 1040 form, when you sign that and it's fraudulent, you're liable for fraud. So, to make it simpler or to make it easier, give us an opportunity to work with city staff like we did in drafting the ordinance. There are many things in here.
Would you please conclude?
Yeah. There were many things in here that are not in the C I M D ordinance.
Mr. Tabachnik, before you go, one question, please come back. You keep saying "we." Are you, are you connected as an investor or one of the people on behalf of this project or you're just commenting in the general "we" of people who are interested in development?
General, I'm not connected with the project, just the general, and this will have an impact on the development that we're currently bringing through the city that's coming to planning and zoning in the next couple of weeks. So, I'm concerned about being straddled with this declaration of covenants and restrictions without having an opportunity. We got this on Friday.
I understand. Which project are you referring to that's coming through?
M O A, Mutual of America.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, thank you. Mr. Ungin? And I couldn't see you standing by the doorway earlier. Were you sworn in? If not, then Miss Sins will swear you in. Anyone else who wishes to speak who wasn't sworn in, this is another opportunity to save time, Ms. Miskel, please. I think you were sworn in. Yeah.
Ms. Ray Righthand, do you swear a firm that any testimony you make before this public hearing will be truthful and accurate?
I do.
Thank you.
Jonathan Ungin, 6501 Congress Avenue. So, excuse my shorts, I feel like Glenn Gromon today. But, but I just, I, I wanted to speak, again, in terms like Glenn, you know, I'm here on behalf of the applicant to say that it's a great project. It's truly the mixed-use area that is designed and desired and necessary in this city. And it's good to see something finally go into that lot. I'm not sure Mr. Tabachnik's concerns, whether it, one thing I do know, getting to know Mr. Abers a little bit over the past year or two, I, I believe him and his company do it the right way. So, if, if they don't have concerns with that, like I said, if maybe you can improve the process, I think maybe it should be done and if it can improve it and make things easier for the developer to, this is the first of its kind. But as a property owner who did apply under the Live Local Act for multifamily residential under the 40%, I still have concerns with that, with the units per acre, which I would be confined under the 40%. I believe since you're calling this a bonus at 25 units an acre, that I would be at 20 units an acre if I developed 40% affordable housing. I think it's something that the city needs. I think in all these areas that it's ripe and meant, I believe, for the, the future growth of what many see in these multimodal cities, that the city considers more units per acre, period, in an area, in all these PMD areas, let alone if you're willing to do 40% affordable housing. Because the reality is it's very expensive to do these projects and especially in a city like Boca Raton where land values are expensive and the cost to build is expensive. So, again, I think it's very welcome. I'm not going to take up any more of your time since I know it'll be a, a busy night here tonight for the next one. But like I said, I fully support this developer's project and I'm happy to see that there will be some affordable housing coming in Boca Raton that hopefully, when we go to here, listen to the city's employees and they start talking about their pensions and everything else and when they get up here and speak, none of them live in Boca Raton. It'd be good to see some people that work for the city be able to afford housing in this city. Thank you.
Ms. Miskel?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Bonnie Miskel, thank you for allowing me to speak. While I'm not here to speak really about the project, I do have to say, it is an amazing example of when the private and public sector work together, how great the product could be. I happen to participate during the processing of the C I M D and I think that this project is one of the best examples of how we, we got what we really were hoping to get. So, it's a great project. I'm very excited and I'm glad it's coming out of the chute. I'm really here to speak about the declaration. I represent a few other of the applicants and we did not have a seat at the table in discussing this declaration. While I heard about it after P and Z, I also had heard that staff was diligently working with this applicant as it relates to certain terms. I frankly did not see a version until Friday and I, I sent that out to my clients. There are other applicants that may not know about this. I can't say because I don't represent them, but they're not here this evening, so I'd assume they didn't know about it. I do have a lot of comments. While I think that they did a great job assembling what could be a basis for a declaration, there are some inconsistencies in this document that don't read correctly at all and I'm happy to go over it in, in some. If in fact, you are moving forward with this item, which I, I do hope you would, I urge you to approve this tonight, not the declaration necessarily, as Mr. Abers said, they don't go for permit until, permit issuance until six to nine months. So, I think there is time for us to work out the bugs. If I'm, if that is not the case, then I'm prepared to go through some of the inconsistencies that I believe need to be revised. Again, we didn't have a seat at the table. I don't know what the revisions are. I'm working off of what was in the backup, which is what we pulled on Friday. So, if you'd like me to go through my comments, I'm happy to do that. If this is something that is, is somewhat versatile and can be revised as some of these other applications come in or in the next month, then I'll refrain from speaking tonight. I'll leave it up to the council to tell me whether I should or I shouldn't, but I don't want to take any more time than is necessary.
Thank you, council members. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, is it possible for us to move ahead with the resolution and as a condition require the declaration to be continuously, I guess, negotiated and quote cleaned up before the permit so we can move ahead with the resolution and not delay it by negotiating the declaration on the fly, which would take an inordinate amount of time?
Sure, I'll ask the city attorney to opine on that, both procedurally and substantively.
Sure, I understand the council, if the council's desire is to move forward with the approval of the application tonight while allowing for some final adjustments to be made to the deck, there would be, I think, a simple amendment that Mr. Shad could read where the declaration form is referenced instead of attached to the agenda materials. It could say substantially similar to attach to the agenda materials and subject to review and approval by the city attorney's office. I would ask though that, you know, I would have a little bit of hesitation that it'd be not completely open-ended, just because we'd like to have some sort of a structured process so that, that staff would understand, you know, the council's desire if it was to limit the items verified to income, pay stub, bank statements and 1040 forms, well that would be something specific and of course, but if it was open-ended, I would just have a little hesitation of certainly would want to hold up the permit application, a permit submittal and, and have a, have a timeline and a process if there was a dispute that was to arise. So, that would be my only, but procedurally, yes, the council can, is within the council's discretion to do, to modify the condition of approval that references the declaration instead of in the form attached to the materials, you would modify the language there.
Mr. Keeler, I know that you've been working on language today, as you said earlier. Where are you with language that apparently I only saw today at 2:00 P. M. and what's your general thought about proceeding without a declaration?
I, I think it's, the declaration that's been presented by staff is a declaration that staff believes is appropriate and does not impose an unreasonable burden on, on the, the applicants or the property owners. The declaration that has been presented is, I believe, a well-written declaration that , that covers, I think there's a couple minor other issues that could be tweaked, but I think it's generally in a form that is, is, is appropriate. If the question is to approve with some additional modifications, the city attorney's office could work with staff to accomplish that.
Have, well, where are you tonight, right now as we stand, based on what they sent in and I know some conversations that were happening right before this meeting?
Well, I know that there was a revision spoken with this applicant, again, can't speak to Ms. Miskel's clients or others, but with this applicant to address some issues to ensure that no unreasonable burden was placed on an applicant, on a landlord, a property owner to, to make an open-ended inquiry that would have some cutoff. I think that there was a series of revisions that, and issues that Ms. Zacharitis raised and thought were good and implemented them. Some additional limitations to ensure that there was no arbitrary or unreasonable actions by the city. So, I think that the form that is attached is, is an appropriate form and I know that staff believes it's an appropriate form.
All right. Mr. Reader, further questions?
Yes, Mr. Keeler, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the Live Local Act statutory language, is there any form of declaration set forth in the statute or is it a general requirement that a declaration be recorded? To your recollection?
The, and staff can correct me, but it's a requirement that there be a affordable period for 30 years and, and I'd have to check our own code to see whether we expressly stated it would be in the form of the declaration. I suspect so, but perhaps staff can check me while I look.
The statute doesn't have any language about a legal instrument, a declaration, anything of the sort, but our code does, so we require that.
You mean as part of the C I M D ordinance, we require a declaration to be recorded?
Yes.
But as part of this statutory language, it's just that the income verification or eligibility requirements have to be there for 30 years?
Yes, the, the statute, both in terms of the 40% and the optional 10%, is completely silent on enforcement.
Right. Ms. Drucker?
Thank you, Mayor. So, quick question for Mr. Shad. What are the neighboring cities? I mean, we're, this is our first project, which we're very excited about, at least I am, but what are the other cities doing? What are, what are they doing in terms of applications, the process? Have we reached out to Delray, Palm Beach, West Palm, I don't know, West Boca? Like, have we gotten some data back on how they're handling? Because they've had, there are other places that already have these affordable housing units. had, there are other places that already have these affordable housing units out there. So, what are they doing?
So, there are some similar programs that have existed for some time. I would probably say the Palm Beach County program is an example. We've talked extensively with the county staff about their experience. Their program has been in place for approximately 18 years. They've produced extremely few units during that time. There's a news article from the Palm Beach Post back from 2022 that probably we've all seen, I would imagine, maybe not. But anyway, our conversations with county staff has indicated to us they have a lot of problems with enforcement. They've had, you know, many projects flouting the rules, and they've had a really hard time enforcing. We have tried to use the experiences that we've heard of and that we are aware of to try to create a stronger framework in this document to make sure that we don't have the same experience. I think it's important to think about the fact that when it comes to this program, enforcement really is everything. We have, you know, we've really worked hard between the council and staff and the developers that participated to write an ordinance that created a good framework, that created the kind of program that we want. But if we don't enforce it correctly, if we, if, you know, the units end up being rented out to anyone that a project wants, and we don't follow up and make sure it's done correctly, then really, it's all for naught. So, I think it's crucial that we understand that enforcement is just, is everything in this process, and I think we've worked through this instrument, tried to keep those things in mind, and I think we have created a really good framework, and we're always open to feedback, like we've shown in the last, you know, two weeks or whatever it's been. But I really think we need something that's very similar to what we have set forth here.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up question?
Please.
Yes, the follow-up question was, God, I lost my train of thought. Sorry, guys. It'll come back to me. In terms of the enforcement, you, they've had, by the way, the P&amp;Z meeting that was referred to, as I looked it up because I wanted to know when, how long the applicant has had this, was the September 19th meeting, which was about two and a half weeks ago. So, that's kind of the timeframe that we're working with. In terms of the enforcement, it was Mr. Lata Batzchnik. He made a comment that it would take weeks for the applicant to get approved. What can you speak to that? I mean, week seems unreasonable, maybe 72 hours is too, but how quickly are we approving these applicants when they're ready to move in? That's what I was going to ask.
So, applicants, to be tenants, is that what you're saying? So, it seems like the big issue that's been discussed in the last few days is the third-party verification of income, right? And so, my understanding is that it's typical when you, when the property owner, the property manager, whatever, sends out a request for a third-party verification, it's typical to take about two weeks to get that back. But I think we should also keep in mind that, as Mr. Abers wrote to you in an email today, they already do, and, you know, verification of employment, for example. That's something that already happens. Most property managers do background checks. Most property managers do credit checks. I mean, credit checks are very quick, but background checks take a little bit longer. So, I don't think this is going to be a significant change in the amount of time it takes to approve a tenant. That being said, I'm no expert on leasing. Don't get me wrong, but I, as far as I know, this doesn't seem like it's going to be burdensome in that manner.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
One moment, Mr. Wigder. Any other questions? I'll go back to you, Brown, too. Ms. Thompson? I think Mr. Kayler referenced, oh, excuse me, some, a proposed amendment that might accommodate further clarification and working on this covenant, because it's, speaking for myself, it sounds like this may need some additional clarification and input from not just this applicant, but others. So, if it's okay with you, could you walk through what that amendment language would look like in the event that my colleagues are interested in proceeding with the application, but then postponing at least the finalizing of the covenant, such that we can vote on the project today while giving staff and this applicant and other applicants the opportunity to have input on that in the future prior to the permitting?
So, I'm working on the version of the resolution that has the strike and underline on it, and I'm on page seven, line 13. This is sub condition H to condition number five. And the way it reads right now is executed and delivered to the city for recordation along with applicable fees in the form attached to the agenda materials in connection with this amended site plan, the following, and then it lists a number of different instruments. Instead of "in the form attached to the agenda materials in connection with this amended site plan," we could say "in a form substantially similar to the agenda materials in connection with this amended site plan."
Since you're still there, Ms. Miskel, thank you for your patience. Would an amendment like that satisfy the concerns of the clients that are not, not the applicant here tonight, but others that you do represent? Would that be satisfactory to you and to them?
If I could add, in accordance with the CIMD ordinance and state law, then I think we could probably get there, because our revisions, I don't believe, are that different. I think there are inconsistencies that need to be corrected, so.
Stating that one more time?
In accordance, yeah, in accordance with, to append what he just said, in accordance with the approved CIMD ordinance and state law, I think we could be comfortable with that.
Mr. Brown, looks like you have a point to make?
It just says, for clarification, on page seven, H refers to seven different things that have to be submitted with the site plan, many of which are not involved with this particular covenant. Sub six of that is the Declaration of Covenant's Restrictions Ensuring Compliance With and Enforcement of the Applicable Affordable and Workforce Housing Requirements Pursuing to Section 28, 164414, which is the ordinance for CIMD, Code of Ordinances, and we could add there Florida statutes.
You're referring to sovereignty, page nine, lines four through six?
Page nine, line four through six. If, that's what Mr. Shad intended.
Good with me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any further questions. I think we proceed down that path, and that can get us moving tonight and allow both the applicant and other applicants to have some input on what this covenant might look like in the future prior to this being issued a permit.
Further questions?
I agree with Mr. Thompson. That was my exact comment. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Mr. Wigder?
I agree. That's the way to go.
Yeah, I'm less, you'll have to convince me because I'm less sure. I'll let Mr. Shad, please weigh in a little bit. So, what's your cover, what's your comfort level with what's been proposed?
Well, the only thing I'm wondering is whether the council intends for this to come back to the council, or if the council just intends to delegate, because what if we don't agree?
Well, my bigger concern is what if the parties don't agree, then what prevails? And then, is it the lesser than, and perhaps what if they're recalcitrant for any reason?
So, I mean, if the council delegate, I mean, I'll speak for myself, if the council delegates this to me, and I don't agree with the revision, I'm not going to issue a permit. That's that. But if the council wants us to come back to make a decision on a disagreement, that's a different matter.
Right. I'm more concerned about, I'm concerned that if the city didn't issue a permit, what the applicant would do. And the, I asked the applicant beforehand if they wanted to postpone this matter. They said that they wanted to proceed. I get Mr., Ms. Miskel, who also represents this applicant, has other clients, too. I think we can deal with those other clients in turn, and by the way, we end up with a lower standard, something that addresses these particular concerns, that I'm sure we'd be amenable to amending the site plan to do a declaration, and if we can figure out a procedure for that, that might make more sense. But I think we need some sort of basis or threshold now, and I'll want to hear from the applicant on summation or on rebuttal, how they feel about that. So, let me ask you, Mr. Kayler, what, if you do what I proposed just now, leave this as a default, is there an easy mechanism where if staff agrees to a, from the applicant's point of view, less onerous declaration, that can be done administratively and that we could file something that, you know, amended declaration with the county?
I think, again, if the council's desire is to move forward tonight with the substantial form of declaration that's in the agenda presented, and with the input from this applicant, we can do that. If the council's concerned and wanting to retain flexibility such that moving forward, additional revisions can be made, that's also possible, either prior to the recording of this deck or subsequent, either via the next application that comes in, or through a process of reaching out to all the CIMD potential applicants or current applicants.
Right. I'm optimistic we could figure that out, but I'm just talking about worst-case scenario. We decide to go forward tonight. We say it's got to be substantially similar. There is a dispute with this particular applicant and staff about what substantially similar is. How do we resolve that? And if we don't have a mechanism now for some default, what happens? Are we in a situation where we're potentially adverse?
I think it's a great question, and so, again, having perhaps a dispute resolution mechanism, or either some structured process such that if there was some dispute, that it could be handled in a fair way, and it could be handled quickly, whether, again, that's delegated to staff, or whether the council directed that matter to be come back to council, I think would be the two options, and...
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wigder?
Mr. Kayler, can we, is it possible for us to approve this and agree that as a condition that the revised declaration would then come before the council for a vote prior to the issuance of a building permit? Can we bifurcate just the approval of the declaration on that, so we can opine as to that? Because, like several of my colleagues have said, and some of the applicants and public speakers, I myself have not had a significant time to go through a lot of these details, which are, some of which are very significant in their enforcement mechanisms. So, I think, obviously, where approval, you know, if the project goes forward as approved, the mechanism for enforcement is a process that we're trying to institute for many people after that, for many applicants after that, and that might take a little bit more review to just say substantially similar, the interpretation of the word substantially similar, that will be a point of contention. So, I would rather just say, if we can approve it and have the revised declaration after consideration by the parties and the staff and colleagues, that we just vote on that, on that, vote on the declaration separately. Is that possible?
Certainly, that's, that would be, it's a creative approach. I think that if the council would like us to get creative, we can get creative. If the council would like to have the form of declaration brought back in some form, I think we could find a way to manage that. If council's not inclined to just have staff review and revise without any, again, short of the council giving some specific parameters right now to say it's, we have issues with this form, exactly these issues, these three issues, then those issues would be specific. But if it's going to be left in a somewhat open-ended way, I think you could bifurcate it, and the development order would have to say that, again, prior to issuance of a building permit, such that there could be no building permit issued until the declaration was approved by the city council.
I don't think that would be happening in the future. I think this is kind of the first, because we're, you know, we're making the sausage, as you say, but it would alleviate some of the mayor's concerns in terms of creating a possible adverse interpretation issue. So, rather than have the possibility of adverse interpretation, just, you know, let's work on that one issue and bring it back. We can work on things concurrently, you know, in this, in this regime. It's not holding anything up. At least, that's my suggestion.
Hold on. I want to make sure I'm understanding here. So, here's what I'm suggesting. I'm not hearing the same thing. I'm suggesting we have a two-tiered mechanism, because the applicant said they want to go forward tonight, and they live with the declaration. At least, that's what he told me, Mr. Abers, and he can come back up and speak. I'd say, we approve this now with two provisos. One, if staff agrees, if staff and the applicant agree on new language, that it can automatically, that staff has the ability to issue an amended declaration that can be filed without approval by council. And two, if there's a disagreement, the applicant has the opportunity to come back to council and seek a site plan. And if there needs to be some sort of timeline for that process, because it would be a one-off site plan change or approval change, so be it. Otherwise, I think we're still in this neither here nor there gray area, and I'd want to avoid that. We have enough litigators in this room already. I don't want to see more of them.
Ms. Drucker, then, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I guess the part that we asked, and I had this conversation earlier with the city attorney, was could we approve the application and then kind of give food for thought? And listen, I think Mr. Shad said it best earlier. This is what he believes is the best form of this document, and you could have seven or six other potential applicants or applicants already putting in all their sense. But I would feel better if everyone had their input, and even if we still land on the same agreement, then at least everyone would feel that they had a seat at the table. We kind of started that because we had that symposium, and we've been doing this. Why it's worked beautifully, this project, is because we've been able to work the city with the developers, so that we all get to the product that works for both sides. So, I don't know, and I agree, there has to be a deadline. Like, we approve the project, then let's give time for input, whatever that is, two weeks, I don't know the date, we can agree on that, have everybody put in their input. And by the way, Ms. Miskel and Mr. Tpatzchnik, we might land on the same agreement, and then it should come before this council, and we should approve the document that would be used for all future CMD projects that include affordable and workforce housing. That's my recommendation. That's what I would like to see be done. But I won't, I don't want to hold the applicant today, so.
Mr. Thompson?
I think three and maybe even four of us are saying largely the same thing. We want to vote on the CMD application tonight. Give staff time to address the issue with the covenant with the applicant and other applicants between now and the time of the issuance of the permit. I don't, I haven't found this applicant to be recalcitrant in their, in their discussions with the city, but in the event that there comes some, you know, absolute disagreement, then they could come back before us. I'm not sure we need to have them amend the site plan in order to do that. It feels like we can do with the language that Brandon, Mr. Shad, had suggested originally, which was in substantial compliance with or whatever, state law, our CIMD ordinance, and then build in some other mechanism by which they can come and seek really a decision from us between now and the issuance of the permit. Is that something that I think four of us are on board with? And the second point I have is, I believe Ms. Miskel has something to say. So, I have a question for her. Ms. Miskel, what do you want to say?
It was never our intention to interfere with their process. Our questions really relate to the declaration, and we just haven't had the time to sit down with staff. But I'm sure we could be very productive in that regard, and they already have been with the applicant. I think probably the cleanest way to do it is as Councilwoman Drucker and Wigder suggested. If you bifurcate it out, and the declaration has to come back to you, then we may not be able to solve our problem, but you have a declaration on the floor that may get adopted, and I understand that. And I think any other representative or any other applicant would understand that as well. The timing just hasn't afforded us that opportunity, but we certainly would participate. We appreciate the opportunity to participate. We certainly don't want to interfere with them, and if we come back here and we're in the same place, then that's where the chips fall, and we understand, so.
Ms. Miskel, I have a question now, because I'm a little, maybe we need representation. This is, you know, the firm representing them is Miskel Backman. It's your firm. I know you're here talking about other clients, but this is still your client. If we get to this point, I don't see that we would have recalcitrants, but heaven forbid we do, and there is a disagreement. If we do what you suggest, and the way you've interpreted some of my colleagues' remarks, if we do that, and you say, well, we're not going to agree with what staff is pushing now, we don't have a default mechanism, and when you come, what happens for you to say or your client to tell you, I'm not going to negotiate further, and so I want staff to issue a building permit, staff declines because we don't feel that, staff doesn't feel that it's met the conditions of the code, are you going to covenant not to sue?
No, of course. It is the firm. I have not been involved in their matter, hence I don't have full knowledge of all the revisions. And all of the applicants, there are seven, I believe, applicants that are coming in under the CIMD. Each of them may have differing views. I'm not suggesting that my concerns reflect anyone else's, but all we're asking for is the opportunity, and by the way, if you adopt this this evening and you adopt that declaration, we would hope that we could come back and ask for reasonable revisions in any event, because this council has allowed that in the past. I think the cleaner thing would be to take, whether it's two weeks or four weeks, come back to city council. We would give you our revisions. Staff will either agree or disagree, and if they disagree, then... then the other document's still on the floor. I mean, if they're comfortable with that document, they're going to go forward with it, because they're the first one out of the chute, and they're going to go to permit ultimately. There, I think you heard Mr. Abers say, there is time for us to try to work together. If we don't, then we'll all agree to disagree, and the city council will make an informed decision on the basis of their rules, their comp plan, and their staff's recommendation.
All right.
And we understand that.
To me, that, what I'm hearing, that sounds more like what I propose, which is, you know, Mr. Abers' acknowledgement, that rather go forward, your client, leave this as the default, give staff the ability to agree to amend it, and if it works out, fine, and if not, they can still come back. But at the end of the day, if there's loggerheads between staff and the applicant, I don't want the city to be in a situation where we're potentially getting sued, and because of, you know, agreements to be done. The problem is, the ship leaves a little bit, the ship leaves port tonight if we grant the approval, and we don't have everything buttoned up. And that's why the bifurcation doesn't work.
And I, and I, and I understand your comments. And frankly, if we truly have an opportunity to change a form, then I don't have a problem with it. I will tell you, though, if the past is any evidence of the future, once something is firm and called a form, it is very difficult to change it. That's our hesitation. But with the willingness of the council and direction to staff to give us an opportunity to sit down with the other people that aren't represented here this evening, you know, I have confidence in my council. I've been in this city long enough to know that you are looking out for the best interests of everyone.
All right. Why don't I suggest this, and let's know when there's questions for Ms. Miskel, because we should probably hear from the applicant, because now we're speaking about people who aren't even before us. They may have their own opinion about how quick they want to decide something. We can work out things that are done, even, we have people speaking who don't even things pending yet. So I'm sure we can work out a version two, and maybe that would reply back. But first, before I invite the, well, I invited the applicant up, then I'll, does anyone else want to speak on this matter who hasn't spoken yet? Does anyone else want to cross-examine anyone? All right, now we'll go to rebuttal, and Perfect, you're right on cue.
Once again, David Abers, N A D G. I think we're all losing sight of the goal here, which is to get workforce and affordable housing units built in the city of Boca. I've written down a quote that we use often in the office, but it's, "Don't let perfection be the enemy of good." This document is not going to be perfect. Palm Beach County, which is a very large county, has 1,500 workforce housing units. That has had a program in place since 2006, acknowledges that their program is not perfect. This is a workshop presentation they did back in August that I attended, and I spoke at. They're working on making the program better, but it's always a work in progress, right? It's impossible to have anything perfect in life, let alone a perfect document that works for all parties. We have been working with staff in the city attorney's office on revising this document so that we think it works for everybody. I think there may be some more minor revisions, but the substantial document in front of us, I think, is acceptable. Again, there may be some minor revisions, but for the most part, I think everybody can get on board with it. If we want to, you know, potentially bring this document back and have other parties opine on it, we're happy to do that. But I don't want to run into a situation where we're ready to pull a building permit and get some workforce and affordable housing units built, and there's not a document that's in place in order to do that, so.
In light of that, would your preference be to postpone, so we could have this discussion among other people who might be here, or to move forward even if the declaration is as staff has presented it?
Move forward as if the declaration is as staff has presented it. I'll just make a comment that we've continued to work with them so recently as a few hours ago to amend it. So I'm confident that we'll continue this as a partnership to the end of the day.
All right. Before, go ahead, Ms. Zacharitis.
If I may add, there is a third option. The option being to approve, as Ms. Drucker noted, approve the resolution, fingers crossed, that's before you, for this beautiful development, and to provide that affordable and workforce housing, while also recognizing the declaration needs further amendments, as we had discussed previously with that revision to that condition. So that is also an option.
Right. So that's really the second option, or to try to frame it. I was going to suggest that we amend it so that we direct staff to work with you, but we still need a failsafe in default. If you can't work on it, then we have to have something prevail.
That's fair. And Mr. Abers, as he's noted, is very anxious to pull a building permit. So we have no desire to continue to pull this along for a lengthy period of time. We want to move this forward rather quickly.
All right. Council members, other questions, the applicant? Then I'll ask a question of Mr. Brown, Mr. Shad, or Ms. Kaler, anyone who wants to speak. How would you suggest we frame what I've just talked about with Ms. Zacharitis, and what I think the council's looking for, which is, we, they've agreed to the baseline. So how do you suggest we work out what we all want to do, which is direct staff to work out an amendment process?
I might suggest that on page nine, beginning on line four, sub six, which is subject to the issuance of a building permit, this condition must be complied with prior to the issuance of a building permit. A declaration of covenant and restrictions substantially in the form attached to the agenda materials, as revised by the, by city staff to ensure compliance with and enforcement of the applicable affordable workforce housing requirements pursuant to section 28, 164414, code of ordinances and Florida statutes, and reference the section in the chapter, which I do not remember off the top of my head. So they would be revised by the staff, but still substantially in the form attached here, too.
And then maybe a question for either you or Mr. Kaler, where would you put in, but in the event of disagreement about substantially similar, this blank document controls?
I think if you, if the council was looking for that type of language, you could put it right after the sentence that Mr. Brown read. It's, in the event that parties aren't able to agree in the final form of declaration, the matter shall be referred to the city council for resolution necessary. And then, again, I think it's already evident, we could have a statement provided, you know, the, no building permit shall be issued until a final form of declaration is finalized.
But you're saying refer to us. That doesn't help if we don't end up deciding. Don't we need a failsafe now? I thought that was the concern you were voicing to me earlier today, that something's got to control in the case of the dispute.
Again, trying to give the council all the options. I think the city manager read language that would, would, if what the council's seeking is a failsafe would be the, the form that's been attached to the agenda materials. I think that's the options, either the agenda materials, or, and if there's a disagreement, it would either default to that, or could provide that it could come back to the council for resolution if necessary.
Right. But again, let me, that's what I'm having trouble understanding. If we don't agree as a council, if they say something we don't, what prevails? Because now we still have a, there's a situation where we may not, we may table the matter, we may not rule on it.
I think that the council has to approve the final form of its development approval. And so the council, again, tonight, as Mr. Abers has offered, that the form that's attached to the agenda materials is acceptable subject to additional minor revisions. If the council was to say, in the event there's a disagreement, that's controls, that could, that is an option.
That's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
Mr. Thompson?
Let's just try to streamline this as best we can, okay? There's two ways you resolve a dispute. You are proposing that it be defaulting to the form that is attached here. I don't think that's what a majority of us have been saying. We've been saying it should be coming back to the council in the event of a dispute. I think we go with that as a means of resolving whatever negotiations happens between the applicant, other applicants, and the city. I think we go with that. We don't default to this. I think we have it come back to us before they have a building permit issued. Do my colleagues agree with that?
Mr. Wigder?
Absolutely. I think we could even do it a date certain. If you don't want to have, you know, building permit issued, just let's, what Ms. Drucker said, let's just pick a date certain. Let's say, let's come back just for that portion in a month, because I don't think this is a major drafting exercise here. This is tweaking and tightening up, and that's what, but in my cursory read of the declaration, I will just say off the cuff, there are some significant provisions in here that I'm not in favor of. And that, keeping something that's substantially similar to this, I would not be in favor of that, because the significant compliance monitoring and utility deduction calculation determinations, that is a level of, that is a level of, you know, exercise and control and compliance that I think was not contemplated in the spirit of income verification. So I think it's, I think there might be a little too much happening here. So I do feel this document needs to be negotiated, needs to be drafted.
All right. Would staff like to have, if the majority of council wants us to come back, that does require us to agree on something. We still don't have a provision if we don't agree. So that now takes the burden off them and puts it on, not the city, not the applicant, on us, which is a problem. So we might be hashing this out for hours, and if we don't land on something, and, you know, there's three of us who hopefully would agree, but if we can't, we got a problem. Would, in light of the fact that the majority seems to want to take that burden on, are there other specifics, like Mr. Wigder just said, that we want to state now to give more clarity to staff? Or would you like to opine offline and give staff some direction there? I know we only got this recently, so, or at least I only got four hours before.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I think I've, I already said how I thought we should handle this. I think if we go to, you know, 30 days, we haven't had a lot of time even as a council to review these. The applicant is okay with the, with this, the way that it is, if we approve it today. What I don't want to happen, which will really be like a lot more of time, is that every project from here on out will want to come back to get an amendment. That will take more time from staff, and it will take more time from the council. And our job is to be more efficient and effective in our policymaking. So my recommendation, like I stated, maybe, I think it was 17 minutes ago, was that we extend it for 30 days, that we allow, contact staff or whoever is going to contact, all the people that came before us in the symposium, have all that information come to us. Staff has to, Mr. Shad will have to say how long they're going to need to review this with legal, and then all of us can also provide the input on the document. Come back to council and take a vote. And what we land at that point is what we land on. And then maybe there's language about, like, everybody had input, and it's also a document for the future, because there could be other applicants that are not even representative of these six applicants. I mean, there could be people coming to us, you know, five years from now that we haven't even seen. So we want it to be something that's not prohibitive, but it's also resulting in the final product, which is a document that could be executed with the building permit to get the affordable units going, and that it'll take, Mr. Shad said, seven, two-week leasing, seven to 10 days or two weeks. I'm not a leasing agent either, and get the people into the units once they're, they're built. So I think three of us at least are saying that. I think you're saying something a little bit different, but that's kind of what I would, that's what I want to see happen.
Okay. Ms. Nakliss?
Thank you, and thank you to all my colleagues. It's a, it's a lot of information. I, in speaking with Mr. Kaler this morning, or this afternoon, staff's recommendation was not to bifurcate, and the applicant does not want us to do that either. Mr. Shad had made a recommendation that staff review and revise, and only come back to council if there is no agreement. So I think I agree with the date certain. I agree with all of us having a couple of weeks to go through this and giving our recommendations to staff. And then I think we have, we leave it in staff's hands to review it, revise it, and only in the event that they do not come to an agreement, then it comes back to council.
Okay. Mr. Shad?
I have a suggestion. It's a little bit different. But since the applicant in this case seems to be okay with this document, if it doesn't get revised, more or less, then why don't we just say, okay, they're six to nine months away from building permit, from what I understand. If there's another C I M D project, more than one, that comes through, and we have time between now and then to work out a, something that, some revisions, and the council would see it and say, yes, this is what we want, then they could go with that alternative document if they want. If they like that better before building permit, between, between now and six to nine months from now, it's something the council has blessed, they could go with that instead. If not, they can sign this.
I, maybe, let me just, I, maybe I'm not, I'm trying to make myself clear. I'm hesitant, and I see, Ms. Zacharitis, please come back, because you didn't, we didn't close the public hearing yet. The applicant said they're willing to go forward. I think we're biting off more problems than we need to now. I don't want to have, make staff do a fire drill to come back in 30 days, because someone who's not even applicant on this particular application is opining that they want something different. Let them fight their fight that day. I'd want to just come back. And I get it, the substantive issues, there are some. But I'd rather have, I'd rather have a default where staff is incentivized to work out. If we take this on ourselves, council, and they've already, they've piped in today at 2:00, and we're already trying to respond to these concerns, same day, we got a lot of people waiting on other things, you know, they're going to be less incentivized to go talk to staff and hurry themselves, because they'll just come back to us. So that's, that's my hesitancy. But Ms. Zacharitis, please, see, help us find a way forward.
Sorry, if I ever got my way. Honestly, this document does need a lot of work. Josh has been working very close with me for over a week now. I've been working with Brandon and Teresa as well, trying to perfect this document. It does need a lot of work. Ms. Miskel is correct that the other applicants have not seen this document. I think that they have a right to, because what you ultimately adopt is going to move forward with all the C I M D projects. I respectfully request that you move forward on a vote on the application for the development, and then have a date certain in two months. Give all the applicants an opportunity to review the document. Work with staff. Your staff is excellent and have continued to work with us. There is no reason to believe that they wouldn't continue to do that. Come back in two months with a revised document for your review and final approval for all C I M D projects. That would be our desire.
Mr. Shad, how do you feel about that timing? Know any other priorities the council has, and ones that might be coming?
It's hard to answer. I mean, this is also a very big priority, from what I understand. So if it's two months, we'll get it done.
Okay.
I can promise you, we'll probably be doing most of the drafting, and you'll be doing a lot of reading.
I'm not sure I'm going to agree with that, so.
Fair, fair. I'm sure you will.
All right. So to recap, you're suggesting we, how did you feel about the language Mr. Kaler read?
Can you read that again, Josh? I apologize.
Sure. I think we're on page nine, and we're talking about the forms that must be executed and delivered to the city prior to issuance of a building permit. And so I, well, there were, Mayor, there was what Ms. Zacharitis stated, and then there is additional versions. If it was to, with revisions acceptable to city staff, and then you could have provided, however, in the event the applicant and staff don't reach an agreement as to the form, that it's attached to the agenda, and it would be reviewed and approved by the council. You also have an option that you could say, with revisions acceptable to city staff, to be presented to the council, you know, no later than 60 days. If staff has a better approach that articulates the competing versions, but I would think that the core elements are, you want to have any revisions acceptable to city staff, and you want to have a dispute resolution mechanism if there's no agreement as to the form of the declaration.
Well, it seemed that the majority of council doesn't want the latter part, that nothing prevails, that we just come back to us in 60 days. This prevails for now? Nope, Mr. Thompson?
No, it was in the event that there's not a resolution between the applicant and staff. Only after that, in the event that there's a dispute, would it come back to us. That was what I was proposing.
Right. And then if, so, Mr. Kaler, a question then. If it happens, we move forward today with that sort of proposal, 60 days or so, 60, it can't be 60 days, it'll be like December meeting, right, sort of more. December meeting happens, we don't come to agreement, then what?
Again, I would think that if that was the council's wish, it'd be revisions acceptable to city staff. And to answer your question, if the applicant and staff don't reach an agreement as to the form, then it would be determined by the council prior to issuance of a building permit. And ultimately, the issuance of a building permit is, is the mechanism that is, is the factor that says go forward or not. And so that would be a condition that would be approved by the council tonight, and if the applicant would be agreeing to. They would have to have that form either reached, agreed to administratively in advance, which is likely to occur, or if there was a dispute, to have it approved by the council. In any event, would have to be done prior to issuance of building permit. And if it wasn't done, then there would be no building permit issued.
All right. Do you, do we need a recess at all to work out specific language, or was what you read clear enough for the record?
I think I have city manager's language with this additional clause, if I understand Councilmember Thompson. I think I have enough clarity. I would ask the applicant, we've talked a lot of different versions, but I guess if we could just reread it one more time. Mr. Brown, I know you had added some language, suggested some language on page nine, lines four.
Through six.
Through six. And I had noted your language. I just wanted to read it into the record.
You want me to go again?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Six, a declaration of covenants restrictions substantially in the form attached to the agenda materials, as revised by the, by city staff to ensure compliance with and enforcement
A declaration of covenants restrictions substantially in the form attached to the agenda materials acceptable to city staff, ensuring compliance with and enforcement of the applicable affordable and workforce housing requirements pursuant to Section 28, 1644, 14 Code of Ordinances and Florida statutes, section to be inserted. Then I think you would add.
Provided, however, in the event the applicant and staff do not reach an agreement as to the form of, sorry, with revisions acceptable to city staff, colon, semicolon, provided, however, in the event the applicant and city staff do not reach an agreement as to the form of declaration, the proper form of declaration shall be determined by the city council prior to issuance of a building permit. Period.
Counsel comments? Mr. Thompson?
I'm satisfied with that, and I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the application as amended.
Thank you, but public hearing's still open, so when we close that first, let me ask the applicant, thoughts?
We are fine with that language, thank you.
All right. Still your rebuttal. Anything you'd like to say?
No, thank you.
We'll conclude the public hearing, then. Mr. Motion will deem your motion on the floor. Mr. Thompson will deem your motion on the floor.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion, council members?
And also, that the motion is then indicating favorable language in Section 1, that they, the criteria have been satisfied, that the application is consistent, and is hereby approved, and all those favorable indications on page three and anywhere else, on page four as well. Can the movement and second confirm that? I confirm.
I also confirm.
All right. Thank you.
And just to clarify, as the record, that's the version that was distributed by staff, with the black line with the additional revisions agreed to by the applicant?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, confirmed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Further discussion? Mr. Wiger?
I do feel that the council is going to need to opine as to the substantive provisions in the declaration. I have not yet heard at which point that is going to occur. If the council is just submitting our comments to the city attorney's office on our own basis, that's fine, but it absolves us and the public of the right to discuss some of these important issues prior to submittals. So, you know, I just think there's, needs to be one more opportunity for us to talk as colleagues about this, perhaps in the next workshop, since we have 60 days.
Yeah. And let me, I think a workshop would be appropriate. Is it the next one or time beyond that?
Whatever.
Actually, let me ask Mr. Shad, I wouldn't say right away, because it doesn't give the staff, Development Services staff, time to work with the applicant. Mr. Shad, what do you think, 30 days? Like, two meetings from now?
I think what Mr. Wiger is talking about is not just working with this applicant, but working with the larger development community. Maybe I'm wrong.
But, well, the idea is we're creating, we're trying to create a form that's going to be applicable to everyone going forward.
That's what I thought you were saying.
Yeah.
So, I think we need more than 30 days in that case.
Yeah.
Yes, but at the same time, the, so then we might have to change the timing of the motion, because right now it's.
60 days.
60, well, it's 60-ish days. Did we say, did we put a time in there?
No, no, there wasn't, no time. It was that it'd be forming agreements acceptable to staff, and then we provided a dispute mechanism, resolution mechanism prior to issuance of a building permit. So, so we didn't, we didn't embed the city, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't, there was no 60 days embedded in the motion.
That's correct. All right. Mr. Shad, how much time would you suggest? 60 days for the discussion? We're still months away from building permit, obviously.
Personally, I'm fine with 60 days-ish. City manager feels the same way, I'm not sure.
I think we should allow 60 days for us to come back to the council with a workshop to discuss where we are, because we will be talking to multiple applicants, each of whom may have an opinion, and then we can review it with council, and then we'll figure out where we go from there.
Okay. Mr. Wiger?
I think we lose a meeting with the holidays around the 60 days as well, so I think it's, I think that's fine. Yeah.
All right. So, we're, we're really talking January, probably?
Yeah.
All right. Everyone fine with that? All right. I will vote yes on this. I have, I'm not going to let perfect be the enemy of the good. I have grave hesitancy with the sort of format we've chosen tonight. I think it is not a good precedent. This may be unusual. We'll have to see where we are. I trust all of us to see the way forward, but I, I'm reluctant to, to make this a habit. I'd rather have gone with what the applicant had said, which is just have a default. But I get that this is something that was a council priority, so in greater spirit, I'll vote yes, but please don't note my, note my concerns, and let's bear that in mind, and to the development community out there, don't plan on this again. This was, I think, an unusual situation that we've had so many conversations about. Ms. Drucker?
Mr. Mayor, and I, and I agree with you. We didn't handle this, we, we took us almost two years to pass our ordinance with Live Local Act, and we handled this a little bit different by having that open forum of the symposium. And that's probably why we're here. So, it doesn't mean for every development is how we're going to do it. I just think that because of this being so important to this, to the city and a strategic priority of the council, we handled it that way, to get the most affordable and workforce housing units in our city. That was really the goal. So, we opened ourselves up by having the symposium, having them come in, and now that's, I think, where we're landed. And I agree, this shouldn't be the precedent, it's just where we're at. And like Mr. Wiger said, we want to have the best application that we can use moving forward, and as I said earlier, not only for these applicants that have come before us, but we might have other applicants in the near future, we hope, that'll want to come out with a product like that, because we need that product in our city. So, that's kind of why we're here, and we shouldn't let, correct, the perfection, you know, prevent us from approving a project that's going to be very beneficial to our city that we haven't had, as Mr. Abir says, since the 80s, which has been a really long time in that area of the city. So, for those reasons, I'm going to go ahead and, and vote yes today.
All right. Further comments? All right. Ms. Sidens, please.
Wiger?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Nackless?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you. Council members, our next item is Resolution 105, 2024. I think it will take some time. Why don't I suggest a brief recess now? This will also give the court reporter opportunity to place microphones, as I know she had requested. So, we'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back momentarily. Thank you.[1033.58]
In the back row.
Everyone ready? We are resuming our Boca Raton City Council meeting on Tuesday, October 8th at 2024 at the time of 7:45. Ms. Sidens, would you please read the title of Resolution Number 105, 2024? It's item 10B in our agenda.
Resolution Number 105, 2024. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Boca Raton considering for a residential R3F-zoned approximately 0.42-acre property generally located at 2,600 North Ocean Boulevard, a coastal construction control line (CCCL) variance from Section 28-1556-3 Code of Ordinances, which variance is required for the construction of a four-story, approximately 38-foot-tall, 6,931-square-foot, single-family residence seaward of the CCL where no structure is permitted seaward of the CCL without a variance, providing for appeal or providing an effective date.
Thank you. I'll ask the city attorney to, or the deputy city attorney to again confirm that the quasi judicial procedures that he read earlier tonight still govern this subject of, this subject, public matter hearing.
Confirming that those procedures apply to this hearing as well.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask council members if they have any ex parte disclosures on this matter, Resolution 105, 2024. I'll start on my right this time with Mr. Winter.
Sorry. I've had no ex parte disclosures on this matter, to my knowledge. I have visited the site. I have, I have read the minutes of the Advisory Board, Environmental Advisory Board hearing. Other than that, I've had no ex parte to my recollection at all.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker.
Pardon me, other than what's in the record and that's already in the emails and all the resident emails that have been received by, I believe, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drucker.
The same. I have no expertise on this matter. I haven't received no phone calls, nobody, I've not had any meetings with the applicant or any other personnel or any other person on this matter. Everything is in the files with all the emails that we received in the last few days. The last time I checked was like 5:00 in the afternoon. If anything came after that, it'll still be part of the file, but it's all in the public records. So, no expertise.
Thank you, Ms. Knackless.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I also received about 24 emails, resident emails, which were sent to the clerk and also some sent to us from residents. It's all in the file. Did watch EAB meeting. And lastly, in an abundance of caution, I'm disclosing a very brief conversation with Jonathan Unjin on September 30th, which involved a mention of previous public discussion about the property, but no details or substance related to the application were discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Going back several years, I've had many, many, many ex parte communications, all of which have been provided to the clerk and the city has, and I've received over the last few weeks, I'd say, yeah, a couple dozen or so emails from residents, and I believe that concludes my ex parte disclosures.
Thank you. I also, over the course of years of this matter and prior hearings, have made prior disclosures of ex parte communications. In recent weeks, all of my communications have been written form by email, all of which have been assembled as part of the clerk's file. I believe that concludes my ex parte communication disclosures. I have visited the site, and I'm sure we've all driven by it from time to time. That, I believe, concludes anything there? So at this point, we'll ask anyone who wishes to speak to please rise so the clerk can administer the oath. And I'll suggest, if you think you might want to speak, just please rise now and take the oath. It will save time. It doesn't obligate you to speak. So if you think you want to speak on it, just stand on up and please raise your right hand.
Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you may give before this public hearing will be truthful and accurate?
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Tamashman Rahman, Chief Planner with Development Services Department, will make the presentation on Resolution 105, 2024, which is 10B on your agenda.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tamashman Rahman, Chief Planner with Development Services Department. The item before you is a request for a coastal construction control line or a CCL variance for the property located at 2,600 North Ocean Boulevard. This is a request for a variance from Section 28-1556-3 Code of Ordinances to construct a four-story, approximately 38-foot-tall, 6,931-square-foot, single-family structure that is seaward of the CCL. This application is being heard as part of a rehearing process. On February 26th of 2019, the City Council denied via Resolution Number 222019 a CCL variance request for the property, under which was proposed a four-story, approximately 49-foot-tall, 14,270-square-foot duplex that was seaward of the CCL. The applicant appealed the denial of the 2019 application, and the matter was subsequently remanded by the Fourth District Court of Appeal for further consideration. Section 28-1556 of the City Code states that no person shall construct any structure whatsoever seaward of the established CCL. At the same time, Section 28-1556-4 does authorize property owners to seek a variance from these regulations. Here you have a map of the property that is outlined in the red dashed line. The overall site is .42 acres and is undeveloped and includes a native beach. The property is zoned R3F with the future land designation of residential medium. The CCL line is shown with the orange dashed line. As you can see, the property and much of North Ocean Boulevard, also known as A1A, is eastward of the established CCL along the segment of A1A. Here's the applicant's proposed site plan. The property lines are outlined in red. The single-family structure is outlined in blue, and the walkway and the driveway leading from North Ocean Boulevard to the structure is outlined in orange. The applicant is proposing a dune crossover that is shown in yellow from the first level of the property to the beach area. The driveway is proposed on the southern portion of the property, which will be subject to Florida Department of Transportation review and approval as North Ocean Boulevard is under FDOT jurisdiction. The residence is inclusive of four bedrooms, seven bathrooms, a mechanical garage that can hold up to four cars, and a partially enclosed rooftop terrace with a swimming pool and spa, pool deck, gym, summer kitchen, bathroom, and mechanical equipment area with access to all levels from, within the elevator. The building will be constructed on deep pile foundations with cantilevered floors, where the second, third, and fourth floors will extend further seaward than the foundation of the building. In terms of zoning district and dimensional requirements for this property, the proposed building meets the required minimum building setbacks. In terms of height, the maximum that is permitted is 50 feet, and the applicant is proposing a 38-foot-tall structure. The minimum floor area that's required is 1,250 square feet, and the applicant's proposing a structure that is 6,931 square feet under air. There are no open space requirements in the R3F zoning district. And in terms of parking, a minimum of two parking spaces are required, and the applicant is proposing four spaces within the garage with a driveway apron that can hold an additional, additional vehicles. Here are the renderings of the proposed single-family residence. The red renderings that are shown here, which have been provided by the applicant, depict what the proposed structure would look like. The top view is the west building exposure or the view from North Ocean Boulevard. The bottom view is the east exposure or the view from the beach. Additional rendering show the proposed north and south exposures. These renderings illustrate that, illustrate the duplex that was previously considered by the City Council in 2019. On the left is the elevation for the duplex, specifically the east elevation facing the beach. On the right is the west elevation facing North Ocean Boulevard. These two charts compare the proposed single-family structure to the previously proposed duplex. The top chart compares the glazing of both structures. Glazing is an architectural term that is used for glass on a building, including windows and doors with glass. The top chart, this provides a breakdown of the amount of glazing proposed for all four elevations, and it compares it to the duplex building. With the proposed single-family structure, the applicant has reduced the amount of glazing on all elevations. As you can see, on the north elevation, it has been reduced by approximately 60%. On the south elevation, it has been reduced by approximately 65%. On the east elevation, the beach, that elevation, the glazing, has been reduced by approximately 30%. And on the west elevation, it has been reduced by approximately 52%. So, in terms of other comparisons of the previously proposed duplex to the currently proposed single-family structure, the applicant has reduced the building footprint, comparing the duplex again to the single-family structure, that the building footprint has been reduced by approximately 10%. The total enclosed building area has been reduced by approximately 52%. In terms of impervase area, that has been reduced by approximately 59%. And the rooftop use, though the, though the use has remained the same, that square footage has reduced slightly to by about 6%. So the applicant has submitted an updated environmental assessment report, which identified a number of things. It identified that the federally listed plant species, beach star, is present along east side of the property. It states that no sea, no nesting sea turtles were observed on the property at the time of the survey. It acknowledges that the city's marine conservationist has confirmed that the beach area has annual nesting of sea turtles, and acknowledges that least, least turrets, which are a state-listed bird species, were observed to be nesting along the beach north of the property in 2021. So the city does have historical sea turtle nesting data that has been collected, which demonstrates that the property currently provides suitable nesting habitat for sea turtles. So to address concerns and potential impacts of the project, staff has incorporated a number of conditions of approval in the accompanying CCL resolution. I will summarize a few, and they're listed on this slide. So the first is that the glazing on the north, south, and east elevations, that is the amount of light that is coming through from the inside of the building to the outside, that it must have a visible light transmittance value of no more than 31%, and that those glazing can have no more than 14% reflectivity. It also includes the city's environmental officers authorized to require that work proposed in the environmental assessment report, that it be phased or sequenced, to ensure that no work results in any adverse impact to sea turtles' nest between March 1st and October 31st, which is the annual sea turtle nesting season. The applicant must submit building permits, which indicate that all light fixtures on the building and on the property shall be full cutoff fixtures with shielding, wildlife certified, and be placed in locations that avoid light trespass toward the beach. The applicant must submit a sea turtle lighting plan, which must demonstrate the angle of any and all light emitted from the property, that it will not cross the line of sight that is detected by the animal, particularly a nesting sea turtle and sea turtle hatchlings. The applicant's also required to submit a tree pruning plan, which will be required to be submitted and approved every two years to the Development Services Department, and it must demonstrate that any pruning of trees mitigate to the maximum, maximum extent possible, light trespass and light reflectivity onto the beach. There's also a number of other conditions of approval that we have incorporated, and those conditions address things such as construction requirements, including pre-construction requirements such as the development of parking, storage, and staging plans, that it must prevent disturbance to native vegetation and to the dune system. So in terms of staff analysis, the current proposal to the variance criteria, based upon staff's review and subject to compliance with all of the conditions in the resolution, staff believes that the application satisfies the criteria and standards set forth in Section 28-127-3 of the City Code, and that the new proposal to build a single-family home rather than the previously proposed duplex is less impactful in regards to the massing of the structure and the overall design. That of the approximately five-mile beachfront property that is in the city, only 4% of those properties have the R3F zoning that this property has, and of that 4% of properties, there are a limited number of properties that could potentially develop with a residential structure. The property is located entirely seaward of the CCL, the CCL, so a CCL variance would be required to develop on this property in any form. And staff finds that the application, when considering the extensive revisions from prior versions, including the duplex, that it helps minimize environmental impacts, as well as the robust conditions of approval in the CCL resolution, has met the high bar for satisfying the criteria for a CCL variance. At its September 26, 2024, meeting, the Environmental Advisory Board reviewed the application and recommended denial with a vote of 420. The board mainly discussed potential impacts of the project on the dune system and the overall building size in relation to the CCL variance criteria that is set forth in Section 28-127-3 of the City Code. The board requested clarification for a number of conditions of approval, which staff provided as part of that hearing process. So to conclude, staff is recommending approval of this revised application for a CCL variance, subject to the applicant obtaining required approvals from all state agencies, including the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the project, and complying with all conditions of approval in the accompanying CCL resolution. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. Any questions? Mr. Winter.
Thank you. I was not part of the commission, the council during the first iteration of this, so please bear with some of my technical questions, but I am thankful that Mr. Brown is here to answer some of the historical analysis. Mr. Brown, briefly, can you explain historically how we have certain lots that are zoned residential that are eastward of the CCL?
Mary, I wasn't sworn.
Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you will give before this public hearing will be truthful and accurate?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
The, some of the platted lots in question on the ocean side were platted prior to the development of coastal construction control line at all, and the line has moved eastward at least once in the time that I've worked for the city.
So this was platted as a residential lot before the CCL came into effect?
That is correct, yeah. I believe in the 1940s.
Or some, something a long time ago. And since then, have, and I know you haven't been here since the 1940s, so I won't hold you to it, but have previous councils considered rezoning these lots away from their residential designation because they were then eastward of the CCL line?
Not that I recall.
Has it, it's never come up? It has never come up until today? Do you recall?
No, not that I recall.
And there are, again, living, living in Boca, going to the beach often, there are several properties, residential in nature, that are, I guess, already constructed eastward of the CCL.
That is correct.
Many. And this lot is 4% of, what did you say, it was 4% of the total residential lots?
It's 4% of all properties along the beach that have the same R3F zoning designation.
This is 4% of all R3 lots on the eastward CCL line, eastward of the CCL?
So there's approximately five miles of beachfront property, so of that, only 4% of that, of those five miles have the zoning district.
Right.
So very limited.
Thank you for the historical update. With respect to the CCL, and I've just done preliminary research on it based on the statute, that's a public record, of course, can you just walk me through, if something is approved, what is the process for an applicant to then get a permit? Do they then have to go to the DEP to get a, a permit for the CCL?
Yes, they have to obtain permits from a number of state agencies, including FDIP, Florida Department of Transportation. They also have to obtain updated letters, storm surge letters from FDIP. So there's a number of things that the applicant would have to do prior to issuance of the main-use building permit.
Is it possible that any of the state agencies might have conditions that are different than the conditions staff's recommending right now?
I would imagine that could happen, but I personally am not knowledgeable of that specific instance, or of where that has happened.
Is it possible that the, any of the state agencies could state that they do not believe that a permit should be issued eastward of the CCL at all?
Again, I do not have knowledge of that personally, since I've been here in the city in the last nine and a half years.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I just want to give the context. I mean, certainly the, the state has its own rules, and they enforce them, and we're not expert in those state rules, but for context, it's not unusual for the state to issue permits to construct seaward of the coastal construction line. Generally speaking, the city's requirements are more stringent, is what I'm trying to get across.
Okay, very good. I'm going to reserve, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to reserve further questions after we hear from everyone else. Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's fine. Council members, other questions? Ms. Rahman, I'll ask, in 2019, under the prior submittal, staff's recommendation was negative, based on a variety of factors, including environmental ones. This time, it's positive. Would you please generally talk about the differences?
So the structure is substantially, substantially smaller. The height has decreased, the square footage has decreased, the amount of glazing, the amount of glass, especially along the east, north, and south elevations, that has decreased. The applicant has also provided us a variety of information that they did not provide us last time. We had requested landscape plans to detail what they were proposing, to see if it's possible to incorporate a landscape palette that could help mitigate light sources coming in, coming from the interior of the building to the exterior of the building. So at that time, they did not provide those things. So with this revised application, the applicant has provided those information to us.
Thank you. Talk a little bit, Will, if you would please, about the dunes, turtles, the analysis that was done in 2019 with consultants, and what might have been done now at this time.
I'm not sure how to...
We, we examined the impact on dunes and sea life, both in 2019 and 2024. Could you just talk about what our consultants found both times?
I think the biggest issue in 2019 was we had requested a lot of, not a lot, but information that we needed to evaluate the application, and at that time, the applicant did not provide those details. Now they have provided us those details, so we could evaluate it and have that comfort level to recommend approval, subject to a number of conditions of approval.
Okay. And were there, the conditions reflect, what do the conditions reflect based on our analysis of any information provided by the applicant or any third-party information provided that we might have obtained as well?
I don't personally understand the question. I'm sorry.
Certainly, that's okay. We reviewed information from the applicant. I'm sure we got some of information on ourselves, we did some analysis of what they provided. We, did we obtain additional information about impact on sea life and natural life there?
So the applicant has substantially revised their, their plans in terms of the height, in terms of the light transmittance from, light sources from the inside, in terms of reflectivity of the glass, those sorts of things. And all of those things are then reflected in their environmental assessment, which we review and confirm the validity of that. So based on that, we believe, and we have analyzed and determined, that the potential impact on sea turtles of this proposal was far less than the previous versions.
All right, thank you. And then there are, there are still conditions in the proposed development order that reflect some of the feedback that we've provided to the applicant based on mitigating impacts?
Yes, that's right.
All right, thank you. Further questions? All right. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. The applicant can proceed first, and they'll have up to 20 minutes. Please give your name and address. I'm not sure the microphone's on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. My name is William Stoddart, 1717 Innuver Boulevard, Suite 201, Vera Beach, Florida, and I have been sworn in. I'm going to present the first half of the presentation, and then Mr. Robert Sweetapple will present the second half. I was hired as the representative for 2,600 North Ocean LLC for the application, and also I serve as the civil and coastal engineering consultant for this project. I just want to go briefly through my experience and education. So I had a doctor of philosophy in 1997 from Georgia Institute of Technology, and I've been practicing in engineering since I graduated. In 2001, I became a professional engineer in the state of Florida, and over the last 26 years, I've worked almost exclusively on civil and structural engineering projects and FDIP permitting of single-family oceanfront residences. Over the course of my career, I've done many, many hundreds of single-family and multifamily residential structures, extending from Dade all the way through the Panhandle and Walton County. And this is, you know, a count that I had done when I put this slide together, 326 permits for single-family. That doesn't include all the other permitting I do with the, the state. But this is an example of what we do. But this is an example of what we do, and it's similar to the project that we're presenting tonight. So the FDEP has established the coastal construction control line for most of this coastline of the state of Florida, as shown in the red. And they issue thousands of FDEP coastal construction permits throughout the state of Florida for construction activity that is seaward of the coastal construction control line. What we're proposing is not unusual. The request to build seaward of the control line is approved many times, hundreds of times, thousands of times, every year throughout the state of Florida. So tonight, we're looking at 2600 North Ocean Boulevard. So the city of Boca Raton adopted the CCCL line, and the city also created a variance that said no construction activity can occur seaward of the CCCL. In the, the city of Boca Raton, they have five miles of oceanfront, 47% of that, 12,350 linear feet, is privately owned. Only 290 feet of the privately owned land has not been developed in the city. Practically every oceanfront building in the city is partially or completely seaward of the line. Tonight, we're talking about 125 feet of the 26,400 linear feet of shoreline in the city of Boca Raton. We're, we're discussing point seven, point 47% of the coastline. The consultants on this project include Alex DeAngelis, the architect, myself, Lynn Bender, landscape architect, Chris Sapotnick, environmental consultant, John Fleetmeier, marine turtle consultant, and Thomas Tommasello, who is a coastal permitting attorney that we worked with. I was first contacted by the owner for 2600 North Ocean Boulevard back in 2015, over nine years ago, about permitting this property. And I had some previous experience with this property. I told him this is one of the top two most environmentally sensitive lands that I've worked on for permitting a single-family residence. And I said, before we even talk to the city of Boca Raton, we first need to go to the FDEP and determine an acceptable seaward most limited construction and a building footprint. So what we bring before the city is reasonable as far as permitting at the state level. And so we did that. We had numerous meetings with the DEP in Tallahassee, and we came up with a footprint that they found was acceptable and in compliance with their rules. So the first project that we brought in front of EAB and the council back in 2019 was for a duplex residence, over 14,000 square foot, air-conditioned, 49 feet tall, and 45% glazing transmittance. And the 45% was chosen because that's the transmittance value that is put into the FDEP general permit conditions and is also in the city of Boca Raton's ordinances. This project was recommended against by EAB, and it was denied by city council. The court ordered a rehearing of this case. In the last five years, we've worked very closely with the city of Boca Raton and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to come up with a environmentally sensitive plan that we're presenting tonight. There's no beach-level decks, and the swimming pool has been located on the roof deck. We've minimized all the impacts we can to the dune as much as possible. Tonight, we're presenting a single-family residence, 6,931 square feet, air-conditioned, 38 feet tall, and it has a maximum of 31% glazing transmittance. The minimization of impacts, we have a small building footprint. This is the narrowest building footprint I've ever worked with. We have 19-foot for the foundation system, and then we can't leave her out for the levels above. We have essentially eight large columns that are going down to a foundation system. We're going to restore the dune to match the existing profile. Even the driveway that leads up is going to be pile-supported and elevated above the dune. And we've incorporated the 31% glazing transmittance for all glazing throughout the project. And the question is, for building on the beach, the Florida Building Code in Section 3109 has a, a section dedicated for structures seaward of the coastal construction control line. It spells out the requirements for the foundation and for minimum elevations, and the structure has to be designed to withstand the effects of a 100-year storm event in the state of Florida. So nothing we're proposing to build is anything unique. This is done throughout the entire state of Florida for all the coastal construction projects. The landscape plan that we've presented here shows the removal of the exotics, the enhancement and replacement or additional plantings, the preservation of the native vegetation. And this is a comparison of the proposals from the 2019 application of the duplex to the single-family. As you can see, there was a significant reduction in all of the areas that was covered in the staff proposal, the staff report. And the glazing, I think this is important, to see how much the glazing has been reduced. And in addition, it's been, the transmittance value has been reduced as well to 31%. Attached to this project are a series of conditions that we're agreeing to. And the staff went through some of them, and I'll just highlight some of the ones that, that I see as important, is the biennial tree pruning plan, the pre-construction planting, the sea turtle lighting planning, and the dune restoration and monitoring. And I've got to tell, tell you that in all the other municipalities I work in, I have not had a municipality attach these type of conditions to any type of project. This is, this is unique to this project. This is the front elevation from the southwest, the northwest, where we're enhancing the vegetation along A1A, or we're replacing the vegetation along A1A, if approved by FDOT. From the front, from the, it's the south elevation, and you can see the void beneath the driveway. The north elevation, and these are the views from the, the beach area. And at this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Robert Sweetapple.
Do you want to mention that the footprint is not where the marine turtle nesting is?
Yes. And I, I just want to make mention that the footprint, the 19-foot footprint that we worked out with the DEP is landward and is not in the location of any of the marine turtle nesting nests that have been recorded.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Drucker, members of the commission, City Manager Brown, Council Kaler. It's a pleasure to be before you to discuss this matter. It's clear that...
Your name and address, please.
My name is Robert Sweetapple, 792 Stackhorn Court, Boca Raton, Florida. The fact that this was denied in 2019, I will confess, was a good thing, because through a lot of hard work, the applicant has now conceded everything that has been requested by the city, which far exceeds anything that has been requested by any municipality and well beyond anything the state is requiring of us. I'm here on behalf, really, of Azure Development, which is probably the premier luxury waterfront builder in South County. They're the beneficial owners of 2600, and for nine years, they've been going through this process to have their property finally approved for development. And I appreciate the questioning regarding the plating. I happen to be a capitalist, I apologize for that, but you saw we were incorporated in 1925, so we're approaching 99 years of various owners paying taxes to use this property, to develop their property. And this was platted as a residential lot well before any of these enactments. There's one other lot that is available to, to reach the 100, the 290 feet, and that's the 2500 lot. So there are two lots that were platted as residential, and they have not been developed yet. And I understand that the private property owners on either side, who come out regularly and object, just as they did at the EAB, where there was not one piece of testimony, and I put into the record the transcript of that hearing that took place in this building two weeks ago. Not one person came in with any quasi-judicially accepted evidence. We heard that the people who have their private beach on either side don't like it, they'd like to have it just the way it is, and they want to enjoy their beach but don't want my client to develop and use their property. And last time I checked, in this country, that's just unacceptable. So what is the threshold issue? The only issue in this proceeding is have the standards for a variance been met? Just as the staff told the EAB, they told you, the answer is yes. The professionals have reviewed this, and they have recommended to you their determination that the criteria have been met, because we have done everything beyond your glazing requirements, beyond your reflectivity requirements. We've exceeded everything. What does your staff say? Well, let's look at the variance requirements, because we know, as your staff has found, and we've been saying since the beginning, without a variance, nothing can be built. So if no variance is granted, you're telling my client, you can't use your residential lot. You're not buying it or paying for it or taking it, you're just telling them you can't use the lot. So we know where that goes, because we have some lawyers on the commission. What are the standards to get a variance? Special and unique conditions exist which are particular to the applicant's case and which are not generally applicable to the property located in the zoning district. There are only two properties in the zoning district, the residential zoning district, that are seaward entirely of the coastal construction line. So the answer to A is obviously, we meet that. B, the special new conditions are not directly attributable to the actions of the applicant. My client acquired this from a foreclosure in the Talbot tragedy and has done nothing to cause the fact that the city platted this in the 40s and then enacted these laws. The literal interpretation of this chapter is applied to the applicant with deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by owners of other property in the zoning district. Yes, if you, if you literally apply your CCCL law, it will deny my client the right to build a house when no one else in the Boca Raton that has residentially zoned property is told you can't build a house. So again, it couldn't be any more obvious that we meet that. The variance granted is the minimum variance necessary for the applicant to make reasonable use of the property. Here, a house of this nature on the beach is minimally reasonable. I don't think you want some type of old wood shack. We want something that's reasonable, and this is, everything's been done to protect the sea turtles. There's no, there's no plant, there's no use outside of the property, no pools, everything is contained, cantilevered, over a 19-foot-deep foundation that's built on piles. And I'll tell you, we're in a storm now, and when this is built, it's built such that it's going to be standing, and we're going to be praying that Meijner Park is standing. This will be standing. It's going to be on foundations, and the building requirements for CCCL construction are enormous, if you look at the building code. Granting the variance is not detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in the zoning district or neighborhood involved. There's been no showing that there's any detriment to the public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in the zoning district or neighborhood involved. The residents have a right under this variance to come in and say that it's detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to their property. There's no showing of that anywhere. And granting the variance is not contrary to the objectives of the comprehensive plan of the city. The comprehensive plan of the city has always said to my clients, you can build a house right here. You've never changed the comprehensive plan. You haven't moved to change the zoning, because that would trigger a Burt Harris Act that would create a claim for diminished value. So you haven't sought to take it, you haven't sought to downzone it, and now it's time to allow my clients to use their property. What else did the staff find? 98% of the privately owned oceanfront of the city is partially or completely seaward of the CCCL. There's been this rush to, oh, the sacred CCCL, don't, don't let anything happen to here, we're going to stop. You have condominium after condominium after condominium that are seaward of the CCCL in this town. House after house in Highland Beach, in Delray, in Palm Beach, in Ocean Ridge, in Jupiter. Mega mansions are being built daily seaward of the coastal construction line. They're approved by the DEP and they're approved by those cities. It's time we stop trying to hide behind the idea that there can't be any development east of the CCCL. There are building code regulations that tell us how to do it. So my client has jumped through every hoop, and I commend you, I commend you for the diligence of your staff and the work the city did while we struggled and fought to exact these kind of concessions. Millions of dollars of value have been compromised, because you can build 50 feet, you could build 17,000 square feet under your code, but my clients have conceded to do what you have asked for, and I will agree, the product is a better product. I live here. I'd rather look at that. I think people are going to be driving by this property and admiring it for years. So I ask this council to recognize my client's legal entitlements. I ask this council to recognize the competence of its staff. You've asked your staff if we've finally met the zoning requirements, and I submit to you that we have. Thank you.
All right. We'll now proceed with the remainder of the public hearing. I've got a number of cards. When I call your name, please come forward, give your name and address. You have up to three minutes. Except for, we have one representative on behalf of a group of homeowners, so Mr. Gibbs gets to go first. Tucker Gibbs, I understand you're representing a group of homeowners, so you have up to 20 minutes, if you like. Please give your name and address, and you have up to 20 minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Tucker Gibbs. I represent the Yacht and Racket Club of Boca Raton, Inc. My offices are at 3835 Utopia Court in Coconut Grove, Florida. My client owns the oceanfront property at 2711 North Ocean Boulevard, immediately to the north of, of the subject property. And my client and other neighbors have serious concerns about this request for the coastal construction variance... about this request for the coastal construction variance before you this evening. These concerns center on the city's coastal construction setback provisions which state, "Seaward of the established coastal construction control line, no person shall construct, shall A, construct any structure whatsoever." This is in your code. "B, make any excavation," which is the removal of soil, sand, or vegetation by digging, scooping, or hollowing out. "C, remove any beach materials or other, otherwise alter existing elevations." And "D, drive any motor vehicle on or over or across any sand dune or damage or cause to be damaged such sand dune or the vegetation growing thereon." Here, the applicant is seeking a variance that will authorize not one or two, but each one of these prohibited actions. The city's coastal construction provisions are based on the findings in Section 161.053 of the Florida statutes, which say, "The beaches in the state and the coastal barrier dunes adjacent to such beaches by their nature are subject to frequent and severe fluctuations and represent one of the most valuable resources of Florida, and that it is in the public interest to preserve and protect them from imprudent disconstruction, which can jeopardize the stability of the beach dune system, accelerate erosion, provide inadequate protection to upland structures, endanger adjacent properties, or interfere with public beach access." The variance to the prohibition on development seaward of the coastal construction control line requires that the applicant present competent and substantial evidence that it meets all six standards in Sections 28.173 of the zoning code. The applicant has not met its initial burden, excuse me, to show you that it meets each of the six variance requirements. In particular, the applicant has not shown that if granted, the variance is the minimum variance necessary for the applicant to make reasonable use of its property. Two, must be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and not detrimental to the public welfare. In terms of reasonable use, the current variance proposal is not the minimum variance necessary to allow a single-family residential use on the subject property. The applicant claims that a denial of this variance would, quote, "prohibit any and all economically viable use of the subject property," unquote, and would not allow the reasonable use of the property. That is not true. In a recent case regarding the city's denial denial of a CCCL variance at the property next to the subject property, the federal court found as a matter of law that the denial of the variance did not cause a total regulatory taking. The judge said, quote, "The city recognizes that the parcel is capable of being developed by a single-family residence. The applicant may apply for a CCL variance to build a smaller, more contextually sensitive residence that satisfied the CCL variance criteria." And that doesn't necessarily mean the 6,931-square-foot single-family house. It also can mean, it also means, a project that meets the minimum size of a single-family dwelling allowed in the R3F zoning, one that does not disturb the dune, and one that addresses more seriously the protection of the sea turtle nesting and hatching areas. Consistency with the comprehensive plan. The variance application is inconsistent with the applicable provisions of the coastal management element of the city's comprehensive plan. This element approves one goal, two objectives, and one policy that serve to protect and preserve beaches, dunes, marine resources, and wildlife habitats. It also establishes the policy of the city not to issue development orders for structures eastward of the coastal construction control line involving excavation, alteration, or any compromise of the integrity of the existing dune. Consider the report of the city's marine conservationist and sea turtle conservation coordinator in their collective review of the impacts of the variance on the sea turtle nesting and hatching on the applicant's property. That's in the last three pages of the staff report. The following statements from their review were competent substantial evidence that the project would damage and destroy resources contrary to Goal CM 1.0.0. And these comments include, "The property only covers approximately 130 linear feet of the beach, but the applicant, but the impact of the reflective surface would meet, impact a larger area of beach north and south of the property." Further, they also said, "Further development close to the beach is not likely to make things better for the sea or sea turtle activity." They also talked about, "There are significant numbers of nests and false false crawls in the dunes at the proposed project site, demonstrating that the dune is a valuable site for nesting turtles." The proposed structure will be extremely close to these crawls, excuse me, to these crawls. Also, "The replacement of healthy dune vegetation with a large structure with a reflective surface and interior lighting will most certainly have a negative impact on the sea turtle nesting and hatching activity in the proposed project area." Number two, "The proposed 6,931-square-foot structure is significantly significantly larger than the minimum size for a single-family house under the applicable R3F zoning district, which is 1,250 square feet. As such, it doesn't support an interpretation that the project is proposed minimizes the potential negative impact on the city's dune system and sea turtle nesting and hatching, as pointed out by the city's marine conservationist and sea turtle conservation coordinator. Furthermore, there's no competent substantial evidence in the record that shows how the proposed alteration and reconstruction of the dune protects, conserves, and enhances that Boca Raton natural resource as required to Objective CM 110." The applicant claims that it can and promises that it will restore any alteration or change to the dune during the construction of the house. However, the applicant does not address the impact that replacing the existing healthy dune vegetation will have on the habitat in the area as presented in the review by the city marine conservationist and turtle sea turtle conservation coordinator. This is a failure to be is is a failure is inconsistent with Policy CM 1.1.11. Residential uses are in the second tier of the developable property in the coastal high hazard area in the code. There is no indication in the comprehensive plan, excuse me, there is no indication that this is the intent of Objective 1.2.0 to allow a massive 6,931-square-foot house that would negatively impact the city's dunes and wildlife habitat, which are addressed in Goal CM 1.100, Policy CM 1.111, and Objective CM 1.10. The staff report notes that of the CCL variances that have been granted, the vast majority authorized very limited development with little or no environmental impacts, such as dunes, crossovers, and modifications to existing improvements. Yet the staff report recommends approval of a variance that would approve of a large, nearly 7,000-square-foot structure to be built over and almost enveloping a dune with negative implications for local wildlife life, including nesting and hatching of sea turtles. Finally, "The variance is detrimental to the public welfare." The applicant has failed to how explain, to explain how coastal construction variance is not detrimental to the public welfare. The city, through its comprehensive plan and zoning code, has established a city policy, and that city policy is not to issue development orders for structures eastward of the coastal construction control line, which involve excavation, alteration, or some other manner compromise the integrity of an existing dune. The goal here is to protect and preserve beaches, dunes, marine resources, and wildlife habitats, and that hasn't really been mentioned, hasn't been discussed. That's the key issue. And this includes, excuse me, "The applicant's plan to to build this huge house over a dune without providing a staff suggested plans and documents that would address the impact of sheet pilings on the dune system and rock layer is contrary to the public interest in welfare, including ensuring the preservation and protection of coastal barrier dunes and beaches from construction which can jeopardize the stability of the beach dune system, related resources, living marine resources, and wildlife habitats." Without that information, the staff, the city council, and the public have no way of knowing whether this variance is not detrimental to the public welfare. Absent this information, there is no competent substantial evidence in the record that shows that this construction will not jeopardize the stability with the beach dune ecosystem and accelerate erosion as stated in 161053 Florida statutes. The variance application is detrimental to the public welfare because it proposes a massive structure over a dune that is contrary to city policy to protect barrier dunes, coastal barrier dunes, wildlife habitat, and related resources. Excuse me. In conclusion, all you, after you hear all the testimony argument tonight, I urge you all, each member of the of the city council, to reflect on the March 7, 2024 order where a federal judge determined that the city did not cause a total regulatory taking by denying the property owner coastal construction control line variance application in 2019 on the property next door, and where the judge determined that the property owner could apply for a CCL, CCCL variance to build a smaller, more contextually sensitive residence that satisfies the CCCL variance criteria. This variance application is nowhere near that point. Therefore, my clients respectfully request that you deny the application because it fails to meet each of the six requirements for a coastal construction variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other representatives on behalf of groups?
I represent my HOA.
Well, then, please come, you can come forward as well.
How do it?
Then that's fine. You can go forward too. Please state your name, who your address, and whom you represent.
My name is Stephen Margolis, and I'm addressing the 2601 North Ocean Boulevard Townhouse Community.
And you live there as well? Or is that your address?
Yes. My home address is 2601 North Ocean Boulevard. I also own a business at 6405 Congress Avenue in Boca Raton. I employ over 60 people. I'm a Florida certified building contractor, and I've built over 2,000 homes in the state of Florida. I also have an engineering degree from the University of Florida. Granting a variance to build a residence seaward of the Boca Raton coastal construction control line goes against every reason the coastal construction line was established in the first place, and denying the variance can be supported by environmental, legal, public safety, and long-term planning concerns. The CCCL was established to protect sensitive coastal ecosystems such as dunes, wetlands, and marine habitats. Construction seaward of this line could lead to the destruction or significant disruption of these ecosystems. These coastal areas are vital for biodiversity and supporting various plant and animal species, including the sea turtles that do nest directly on this site and whose habitat would be disturbed by the construction of a building on this site. The area under consideration seaward of the CCCL is particularly prone to erosion. Allowing construction could exacerbate this issue by destabilizing the natural buffer of the existing dune that absorbs the impact of waves and storms. The removal or alteration of these natural features can lead to accelerated erosion, undermining both the natural environment and the infrastructure itself. While the owner claims that they would not disturb the existing dune and would repair it if he does, we all know that any damage to the dune would be irreversible. As a builder and engineer, I can definitively state that it's impossible to build a structure on this site and not do irreparable damage to the dune there. Florida's coastal areas, including Boca Raton, have already faced significant damage from hurricanes and are vulnerable to future extreme weather events and sea rise. Granting a variance to this project increases the risk of property loss, injury, and even death, not only to the owner of this property but to nearby residents who rely on the protection offered by the buffer that this dune provides. The potential hazards of building in such a high-risk area cannot be ignored. Denying this variance aligns with responsible, forward-looking planning that considers the realities of future climate conditions. Boca Raton has invested in coastal management and strategies to adopt the climate change. Approving development that conflicts with these goals sends the wrong message and hinders efforts to protect our community. The CCCL was established to create a legal boundary that prevents construction in areas most vulnerable to environmental and safety risks. Granting a variance would set a dangerous precedent, thereby undermining the effectiveness of the CCCL as a tool for environmental protection and safety regulation. Within the city's Code of Ordinances, six criteria must all be met in order for a variance to be granted for this project. This variance request does not meet any of these criteria. Specifically, special conditions, special and unique conditions do not exist which are peculiar to the applicant's case. No construction is currently allowed seaward of the CCCL. The unique conditions of this property are directly attributable to the actions of the applicant. He bought the property with full knowledge that construction would not be allowed there. Denying the variance would not deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by owners of other property in the zoning district. No one should be allowed to develop seaward of the CCCL anywhere in the city. There's no reasonable use for anything to be developed in this property, given the environmental, legal, public safety, and long-term planning concerns that I've just gone through. Granting this variance would be extremely detrimental to the public welfare in the neighborhoods adjacent to this community, given the environmental and public safety concerns of allowing this project to go forward. And finally, granting this variance is contrary to the objectives of the comprehensive plan of the city, as evidenced by the adoption of the CCCL in the first place. The property owner was well aware of the CCCL when he purchased the property, knew that he was prohibited from building on the site. He purchased it for $9,000, according to the Palm Beach County Property Appraisers website, and took a long-shot gamble that he'd be able to get a variance by throwing enough money, lawyers, and lawsuits at it, but he has no right to the variance. The owner of the property is not engaged in any productive discussions with nearby residents. Everyone is aware of the lawsuit settlement currently on the table, which states that granting a variance to constructing the property is subject to satisfying the CCCL variance criteria as set forth in the city's Code of Ordinances. While they haven't satisfied any of the criteria necessary to obtain this variance. The City of Boca Raton Environmental Advisory Board unanimously voted against this project, and as you can see from the attendance here tonight, the community is strongly against the approval of this variance. No one from the community is here to support this project, only the owners paid consultants. Everyone else here tonight is a Boca Raton resident that is against this project and variance. Granting a variance to build this project would be going against all environmental, legal, public safety, long-term planning concerns, and community opposition. Granting exceptions without a compelling public interest would be irresponsible and contrary to the city's Code of Ordinances. I urge you to take your constituents' wishes, the advice of your Environmental Advisory Board, and the city's Code of Ordinances into consideration and deny this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other representatives on behalf of organizations?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is George Salinger. I am a resident at the Yacht and Racket Club, which is next door to this community. I'm the president of the Yacht and Racket Club, and I'm here representing 366 families that live in Yacht and Racket Club, many of whom are here tonight, and others who are not able to come tonight that have sent many emails to you.
And Mr. Salinger, did you hire Mr. Gibbs to speak on your behalf?
We did.
All right. It's not fair to give you 20 minutes. Do you think you can find it to three?
I will try to do that.
Thank you.
I'll focus on three factual environmental factors that I think are key to the discussion. First is the sea turtles. Development will certainly endanger sea turtles. The impact is clearly outlined in the report prepared by Dr. Rosenko and Mr. Anderson, both of whom are City of Boca Raton employees, which was included in the package distributed by or for the by the city to the Environmental Advisory Board meeting. by, for the, by the city to the Environmental Advisory Board meeting. In their report, Mr. Anderson and Dr. Rosenko clearly outlined the adverse impact to sea turtles, and it does not come because a building is built above the dune. It comes by the implication of light and reflection on the turtles that come to, come to nest in the area, and then afterwards, when the hatchlings, you know, come to light. The loss of the nesting area caused by the construction would force females to nest closer to the areas or subjecting the nests to waves and washout, and even worse, cause some of the females to refuse to nest in the area. Building, building lights and the reflection from the building, extensive glass and wall surfaces, will cause hatchlings to be disoriented, which will make them easy prey. In summary, the development, you know, will, will cause, the development of 2,600 mean will cause, will most certainly cause a result endangering sea turtle reproduction in Boca Raton. I wanted to put things into perspective on, 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 on the, on the aspect of light reflection. Thirty percent, you know, it may sound like a very small number, right? Thirty percent propagation of light, or 17% reflection. This is totally incorrect. It is, it is an enormous amount of light that will be projected onto the, onto the surface of the, of the, of the beach that will cause sea turtles to either not deposit the eggs or actually be disoriented. The second is the vegetation. The work that will have to be done will actually, without any doubt, require removal of vegetation. It is, as others have said before, it is not possible, after vegetation is removed in the dunes, to get vegetation replanted that will successfully grow. This is just a complete fallacy, especially when you put a building on top of it. It's just not possible to, for vegetation to grow. The final is, the project is contrary to the environmental values of the City of Boca Raton. Past residents have strived to make the City of Boca Raton a beacon of environmental conduct, which we all endeavor to maintain. Boca's past authorities, and even yourselves, in your current roles, have ensured these values in the city, city codes, and the Boca Raton souls. As, as your constituents, we, we ask you to please preserve and enhance these environmental values that are, for our current residents and for future generations. Thank you.
We'll proceed with the cards, and as is the custom at the Florida Legislature, if you've, you've already had your card, if you oppose an item, but, or are in favor of an item, although I have all oppositions here, if you don't wish to speak, you can just say you waive in opposition, and we'll note that. If you want to speak, though, you're still certainly free to do so. Michael Laslow, then Debbie Teich, then Matthew Pinchik.
Hello. I'm Michael Laslow. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. 2697 North Ocean Boulevard, Boca Raton. So I want to argue that the applicant fails to satisfy one of the six conditions necessary to receive a variance. This will be my focus. Condition B, the special and unique conditions are not directly attributable to the actions of the applicant. Here, the applicant claims that the special and unique condition we're addressing here is that they own a lot on which construction is forbidden. In their response, the applicant cites two factors leading to this special and unique condition. First, that the property was subdivided in 1944. That's certainly one reason for the problem, because they couldn't own the lot if it never existed. Second, they argue that the city's regulations based on the coastal construction control line were adopted long after the lot's creation. This, of course, contributed to the unique conditions, because if the city had not adopted this ordinance, then they could build freely on this lot without requiring a variance. There's a third factor contributing to this special and unique condition which the applicant doesn't mention. This is the fact that they bought this 2,600 lot in the first place. Had they never purchased this lot, the special and unique condition disappears, since they wouldn't even own this property. So by purchasing this lot, knowing full well that it could not be developed, they also contributed to this special and unique condition, and because they put themselves in this position by their own voluntary and informed action, condition B holds them accountable. One more paragraph. You see, condition B says that if the special and unique condition is directly attributable to the applicant's action, then they don't qualify for the variance, and that's exactly what has happened. The special and unique conditions, that of owning this lot that cannot be developed, is due to the applicant's own action, that of purchasing this lot that cannot be developed. On the basis of this condition B alone, at the very least, the city council should deny this variance. Thank you for your attention.
Ms. Teich.
Debbie Teich, 2667 North Ocean Boulevard. I will read the closing, I will read the closing excerpt from the statement titled, "Potential Impacts to Sea Turtle Nesting at the 2,600 North Ocean Boulevard Property" that appears in Packet 1 produced by the city staff. This was prepared in July 2018 by Kurt Rosenko, Ph.D., who was Marine Conservationist for the City of Boca Raton from 1995 until he retired in January 2021. The statement was updated in April 2021 by David Anderson, who has been our city's sea turtle conservation coordinator since 2007. Here is the closing excerpt from their statement, which is representative of the statement's sentiment as a whole. "Replacement of healthy dune vegetation with a huge, large structure with a reflective surface and interior lighting will most certainly have a negative impact on sea turtle nesting and hatching activity in the proposed project area. Over the last 26 sea turtle nesting seasons in Boca Raton, we have often noticed negative impacts of reflective surfaces, not necessarily glass reflective surfaces, on nesting sea turtles and their hatchlings. Our staff has, has recorded hatchling disorientations in front of white-painted seawalls during a full moon many times since 1996," and you have all of that. "I admit I have not been a lifelong advocate on behalf of sea turtles. Over the nine years that I've lived in Boca Raton, however, I have been to Gumbo Limbo Nature Center several times and have been moved by a sea turtle rehabilitation center. I've also been to their evening turtle releases at the beach, in awe as hatchlings crawl awkwardly, yet intuitively, into the darkened ocean. I simply can't imagine this developer's project jeopardizing all this, knowing that they bought this 2,600 lot, fully aware that the construction was forbidden on it by longstanding city ordinance. This ordinance was adopted to protect the environment. Please let it do its work." And now, this was my prepared speech, however, I feel compelled to add something else. Not even two weeks ago, I marveled at the rage of the ocean as I left my home across the street from 2,600 for the EAB meeting. The waves were so fierce that they were crashing against the vegetation close to the road, covering nearly all of the sand on the beach. I have seen so much of our beach eroded over the years from storms, and I could not help but wonder how this erosion would impact a home built on the beach. Ironically, today, we are waiting for an even stronger hurricane to hit with record winds and storm surge. During the many years we have been discussing 2,600, we seem to be feeling greater effects of global warming each year. I am proud of our city founders, who have had the foresight to protect our environment by encoding it in our city laws, and of our elected officials that have enforced these codes. I trust that you will also respect and honor them today. Thank you.
Mr. Pinchik.
Matthew Pinchik, 2687 North Ocean Boulevard, Building G. I'm new to this. I love Boca beyond words. For the record, I was in the showers of 9/11 as a medic, 41 years a medic, actually, in New York, and came to Boca to bring our special needs child to enjoy the beach, and only a month ago purchased this home at the, at the Yacht and Racquet Club of Boca Raton, such that we could take our special needs child to a quiet beach area that was not developed and certainly was not a construction site. This was a huge financial decision for our family, and while we previously went to a developed beach, known as Seagate, everyone knows that lovely place, it was really difficult for our child to enjoy the beach due to the significant activity and development. Simply put, approving this variance would be a tremendous loss for our family and goes against the essence of the use of this beach, what we believe is what it's supposed to be, a quiet undeveloped beach. If this variance is approved, I also feel that a precedent, even though there are only two pieces, we're setting a precedent that will ultimately change the face and destroy the peace and quiet of the, at the residents and visitors come, come to expect. As such, I implore you to not, not to approve this. With a minute and 33 seconds left, I'm totally pro-development, and I've heard such nice things about this attorney and his amazing capabilities, and I listened to it tonight, and I would want you, as my attorney, if I was fighting a subject, but from the heart, you know, I mean, you know I'm coming from a place that's rather tough, and it's my personal situation, it's not necessarily the law, and I believe people should have the ability of using their property. And however, it was so eloquently said that the owner acquired this site after the CCCL protections were established, being fully aware that the, of the development limitations on the site. And I feel tough, the fact that he can't do what he wants to do, and I would want him to have a beautiful home like that on the beach as well, but it's, to me, it's a matter of what the reality has been and what he knew when he purchased this, is my take on it. And I thank you for your time. I'm most impressed by this experience. This is the first time I've come to a meeting. The eloquence of everyone here, and obviously, the council is palpable. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Richard Hunter, then Louis Kurtz, and Jamie Akasu, Akusu, excuse me.
Hi, my name is Richard Hutner. I live at 2667 North Ocean Boulevard, Boca Raton. I'm the vice president of the Yacht and Racquet Club. I have nothing against Attorney Sweetwater. I'm going to say the same thing. If I could build a home on the beach, I would love to, but I must say something. Every morning I wake up, I face the ocean, and people drop, drive by, they park their cars, they get out, and all they do is take pictures of our beautiful beach, and this goes on and on every day. Every morning I wake up, it's the same thing. So I'm going to tell a little biography about myself. I have 2 minutes and 15 seconds, and I have a 2x4 card, which only goes to show my, my career, okay? So, for 60 years, 60 years ago, I bought shoes for a major corporation in New York City. It was Melville Shoe Corporation, Tom McCann, Miles Shoes, and so far and so forth. I was the largest shoe buyer in the United States at the time. Most of my shoe buying was done in Maine, New Hampshire, and Massachusetts. One day, a salesman came into our office and said to me, "I'd like you to buy a shoe from Taiwan." I went to my merchandise manager, and the merchandise manager said to me, "Give him 1,800 pair of a shoe, and we'll get them off our back." And I said, "Okay." So we bought the shoe from Taiwan, the 1,800 pair it came in. The next day, a salesman from Massachusetts walked into my office and said to me, "You just closed the factories in the United States." I said, "How did I close the factories in the United States? I only bought one shoe." And he said to me, "It's one shoe today, it's two shoes tomorrow, then four, then eight, then 16. I don't want to see 2,600, 2,700, 2,800, and so on and so forth. I want to keep our beaches as beautiful as they are. I don't want to look like Highland Beach. I want to be proud and as beautiful as Boca Raton is today." Thank you.
Mr. Kurtz.
My name is Louis Kurtz. I live at 2667 Ocean Boulevard, which is one of the condominiums of the Yacht and Racquet Club. I happen to be the president of that condominium, but I'm here today not representing the condominium, but just as a Boca resident and an ocean, beach, and wildlife aficionado. I am speaking to urge you to reject the application for a variance to allow construction of this large, single-family home at 2,600 North Ocean Boulevard, beyond the limits of the coastal construction control line. Preserving the dunes, leaving undisturbed the nesting areas of the local alien population, and protecting the hatchling turtles from the light that will inevitably disorient them as they seek to enter the sea after emerging from their eggs, may seem trivial in our modern world, but they most definitely are not. Permitting the continued degradation of our natural resources is one of the primary tragedies of our generation. These resources are unique, irreplaceable, and invaluable. Allowing their destruction to take place so that yet one more McMansion can be built is actually obscene. Please note that the current owners of this site acquired it long after the CCCL was established, and were fully aware of the limitations of development of the site at the time of its purchase. Nevertheless, with no regard whatsoever for the city's plans, they devised this project and have pursued it relentlessly. No pun intended, but it's time to draw a line in the sand. I urge you to preserve the respect for the quality of our local environment that motivated the creation of the CCCL in the first place, and by so doing, safeguard the natural and unspoiled beauty of our community. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Jamie Akusu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jamie Akusu, 5150 Sable Gardens Lane here in Boca Raton. The public interest against this variance request persists, yet the 2,600 property's lawyer continues to bob for reasons to defend the indefensible. Morally, legally, environmentally, I stand in opposition of this motion to grant a variance of construction seaward of the CCCC line. First, the 2,600 variance application whines about the city denying the owner's reasonable use, but the U.S. Supreme Court case law they cite sets a standard of all reasonable use, not just the use the petitioner reasons is best for them. Variance isn't needed to sell or donate a property they willfully bought, knowing it was on the wrong side of the construction line. This is noted on page 179 of the resolution. At this point, they've sunk so much money into this project that they are desperate to recoup their losses by bullying the city into letting them build a dune destroyer. Secondly, this project fails all of the six control line standards, which are listed on page 6 of the resolution, and will never be able to ensure the adequate protection of adjacent sections of dune, upland structures, and public property within the zoning district. These are mandated by both our Florida statute 161.053 and our city code 28-127 subsection 3. So I will go through the first two standards before turning it over to my neighbors to continue these remarks. Standard A, the developer argues 2,600 is special and unique, because this lot is still zoned for development but isn't developed. for development but isn't developed. What they fail to admit is that every other developed property was developed before the control line was created. Those other properties are all grandfathered into being seaward of the line. 2600 wants to be post-grandfathered in 50 years after the grandfathered properties are old enough to have grandchildren. Standard B, special and unique, doesn't count if the property owner is directly attributable for said status. Being the only property late to the environmentally asinine party is the excuse 2600 is using to say they're special. If not for this vile effort to build, there would be no reason to ever ask if the property was special or unique. My neighbors are here to continue these remarks with standard C. Thank you.
Thank you. Next cards I have are Jacob Abraham, Danny Mancini, Linda Shapiro.
My name is Linda Shapiro. I live at 2697 North Ocean Boulevard. My apartment faces the intracoastal, so this building would not impact my view or anything else. But personally, I think for this council or any future council to allow any more building on the beach would be unconscionable. For all of the reasons that you've heard here before, I do not have to reiterate them, and we don't want to open the gate to look like Miami Beach. Thank you for your time.
Jacob Abraham, Danny Mancini. Please come forward.
My name is Henry B. Barnett III. I live at 2717 North Ocean Boulevard.
Mr. Barnett, I'm trying to go in order which the cards are submitted.
And I'm reading from a series of pages here, and I'm following the young lady that spoke before.
Is either Mr. Abraham or Mr. Mancini want to go first?
I'm fine letting him go before me. That's Mr. Abraham.
He's Mr. Mancini.
I also have, I'm just saying, I have cards from Frank Guadagnino, Adam Gold, Grant Kelly. If any of you want to speak first, you can. If you want to give Mr. Barnett the card to see, we can keep him up here. All right, Mr. Barnett, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm continuing, as I said, the young lady that spoke before. Standard C, the 2600 claims to be deprived of the rights commonly enjoyed by others in the zoning district. I'd love to parse the word "common," parse it out, but it's a waste of my precious time. No other property has been granted the rights to build a new development seaward of the control line since the line was created, nor since it was moved. Every other property is burdened with applying for variance only to maintain their property and must do so given the strict guidelines set forth by the city, state, and federal laws. New construction isn't common, it's revolutionary. Standard D, reasonable use. Nearly 15 years ago, the owners could and should have worked to transfer the land to the city, gambling on buying the land for one-tenth of its tax valuation and trying to develop it reasonably only if you own a casino. They've now spent millions, wasted the city's time and money with lawsuits, and will do everything to build a turtle-killing cantilevered box, all because their Icarian struggle hasn't yet plummeted into the sea. Because of unreasonable hubris, the rest of the city is on a collision course with a dune-impaling monstrosity. The city isn't depriving or taking anything from 2600. The city is upholding the law and not letting lawyers and developers undermine the integrity of the public's interest in upholding the control line. If you go and reread Agnes versus the City of Tiburon, the precedent takes a fatal bite out of 2600's complaints. Denying control line variance is not unreasonable as the applicant has other equally reasonable Standard E, the control line was crafted and moved to prevent construction detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property or improvement in the neighborhood or zoning district. The justification for the control line hasn't disappeared. It's only gotten worse over the past several years. And with no ability to ensure the security of public and private property around the 2600 site, the control line serves as a stopgap against runaway development. Will the council ignore and undermine the welfare of every member of the public who fears or loathes this development? Should the welfare of all the immediate neighbor, neighbor, public who have shared their feelings be directly undermined for the development of this dastardly dwelling? Your turn. Thank you.
Jacob Abraham, 540 Northeast Wave Course Way. Standard F, aside from the creative cherry-apple picking of which parts of the comprehensive city plan the applicants nefariously omitted from their application, the city plan is clear on page 1 of the coastal management section. I'm not going to cite it, it's too long, but this project will never be able to ensure the absolute protections of the coastal barrier nor its inhabitants. It glorifies the privatization rather than the priorities of the public's use and well-being with regards to the shoreline. It will invariably result in public expenditures in a high-hazard area. Once finished, it will direct a small concentration of residents to populate this high-hazard lot. 2600 wants you to believe their property cannot fairly be considered a threat, yet look at all the folks here who feel threatened. Granting variance is actually unfair to the rest of us. Goal CM 1.00 is very clearly being violated. Restrict development activities that would damage or destroy resources and protect human life. I'm not a fan of creatively cutting a sentence apart like the applicant does in their application, so I'll also cite the second half of that line, which reads, "And limit public expenditures in areas subject to destruction by natural disasters. The inland properties, the neighboring dune structure, and the pavement of A1A will all be subject to greater erosion when the existing vegetation at 2600 is ripped up from the dune and replaced with concrete pilings and supposedly newly-sufficient vegetation." And I haven't even addressed the damage going to be caused during construction. We know what coastal erosion looks like. If the 2600 folks want to plant a new artificial reef off of Boca's coastline, they should seek variance for a construction a little bit further east. They might as well replace the artificial reef at Red Reef and not drag the neighborhood underwater with them. The city plan has more language that justifies denial. Policy CM 1.1.11 is clear. It shall be the policy of the city not to issue development orders for structures eastward of the coastal construction control line, which involves excavation, alteration, or in some manner compromise the existing dune. Am I missing something? Is driving pilings into the dune not an alteration, Mayor, or some manner of compromise? This is the most blatant and clear wording that I've seen. The policy stipulates to not issue development orders, and we're not talking about measures to sustain existing structures, which is what the pre, which is what predated properties are asking you for, and 2600 is claiming now to magically somehow be a part of. We're talking about developing a new property from scratch? It's the city who must avoid this compromise. The city appears trapped by the threat of further legal action, and because of mistakes made by previous board members, I don't want to get into it. But the reality here, council members, is you have an out. Publicly accessible language from the settlement stipulates construction is subject to satisfying the CCCL variance criteria as set forth in the city code and all other zoning, building, and other applicable regulatory requirements. The CCCL standard is not and can never be met by this property, and the city plans are not and will never be met by this property. The 2600 team has taken their sweet time dragging the city through the mud so they could build the apple of their eye as part of a shoddy investment gamble, hatched back when they brought the property, knowing its history of variance denials and location seaward of the CCCL. 2600 fails the test. They fail the community's ethos test. They failed to put the public's interest before their vanity project. Fail this variance request not just because it's sending a message that tricks and schemes of developers aren't going to fly in the city of Boca, fail because the law justifies upholding the public's welfare and clear interest.
Danny Mancini, Frank Guadagnino, Adam Gold.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Commissioners, Daniel Mancini.
Can you just check if the mic's on? It seems a little less.
Is it low?
There you go.
I'm not trying to scream.
That's fine.
I live at 2667 North Ocean Boulevard apartment I-301 in the Yacht and Racket Club of Boca Raton. My apartment looks directly at the proposed development. What I did is take a brief look at the construction sequencing that's proposed in this project. And what it shows is that in order to build this project, all of the vegetation on the western side of the property through to the edge of pavement of A1A will have to be removed. That's 40%. Next, and once the vegetation is all completely removed from property line, from west property line to, I'm sorry, from the north property line to south property line where the beach axis is, they went, then we'll drive sheet piling from property line to property line and excavate down almost to sea level in order to install the foundations, the pile caps, and then build back up. That's 60% of the site. All this activity permanently destroys 60% of the existing vegetation and dune and replaces it back. The intensity of this construction is not consistent with the coastal construction control line. I ask you to deny the variance. Thank you very much.
I believe it was Adam Gold and Grant Kelly. Oh, no, Mr. Guadagnino.
Mr. Guadagnino is going to speak at the end of the year 16, the card in section 16.
Thank you. Adam Gold, Grant Kelly.
I'd like to use number 11.
Are you Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Thank you. Grant Kelly? Grant Kelly present?
Mayor, City Council, thank you for your service. Kevin Meany, 192 Northeast Spanish Trail, 33432. I guess I'm not the only person that read that book back in the 80s or 90s, winning through intimidation, was it the art of the deal? In any case, there's no hardship here. There's no hardship here, just millions of dollars at play. This is Boca Raton, Florida, the best oceanfront community in America. It is not Jacksonville, it is not Punta Verde, it is not the rest of Florida. It's Boca. There's no hardship here, as I said, just the money at play. The petitioner acquired unbuildable property. Legal proceedings, the request was denied, leading, legal proceedings were held, and a mulligan was granted, and here we are again. By the way, I can't tell you how many people that I know that are not here that would like to speak but aren't for fear of litigation, so it's effective. The petitioner gambled and lost. The proposed builds changed, but the reasons to deny it have not. If he's worried about paying taxes, donate the property to Gumbo Limbo and take a tax deduction. Thank you for your time. I have surgery tomorrow at 7:00.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Grant Kelly, 951 Lake Wyman Road. I'm speaking on behalf of the homeowners of Lake Wyman. I'd like the City Council to heed warnings and the recommendation of the Environmental Advisory Board with regards to the impact of the success of the sea turtle nesting on the beach, which I have personally witnessed and have photographs of sea turtles laying eggs directly in the beach dune where this building is being proposed. I've included those pictures in the environmental speech that I had made for the Environmental Advisory Board. I've also have several nighttime photographs of sea turtles refusing the beach due to the bright lights and the background. Sea turtles are very sensitive, and they're easily spooked and discouraged due to light pollution. Adding to an already complicated problem would be irresponsible. Council is speaking in favor of the project. At the environmental meeting, it said that the proposed home would be built on poles allowing crawl space in the beach dune. They believe that this will allow sea turtles to use the crawl space underneath the home. Being that sea turtles are already refusing the beach due to existing light pollution, it's preposterous to believe that they would utilize a crawl space under a brightly lit home. Secondly, we've all been lucky with regards to major storms. We haven't had a direct hit since Wilma in 2005, and a Category 5 Hurricane Dorian was a mere 50 miles off the coast of Palm Beach County in 2019. We're overdue for one of these storms to hit this area, and this proposed building would be completely blown away if a large storm were to hit Palm Beach County. The city of Boca Raton has already rebuilt this beach several times to prevent the impact on the existing real estate. Adding to a smaller, adding a smaller and more vulnerable private home would be irresponsible considering the threat of more destructive hurricanes and documented sea level rise. I personally have been on this beach during tropical storms, and even a relatively mild storm, the ocean water runs deep within the sand dunes where this project is being proposed. I also have seen the damage that Hurricane Wilma has caused in 2005, which virtually eliminated this beach. Building a small home on stilts so close to the ocean would be no match for the Atlantic Ocean in the event of a catastrophic hurricane. It's not if, but when this happens. Consider the extended and continued environmental impact a destroyed home on the beach would have. As you all know, the west coast of this state has suffered immensely with coastal buildings, many of which were built on pilings, were being completely destroyed. We see this on television, and it's horrific. Boca Raton would be experiencing one of these storms one day, and anything built within these sand dunes on the beach will be completely destroyed. I ask that you consider the real-life experience that I've had on this beach, and would I be happy to provide any photographic proof to support my eyewitness accounts. I have provided just a fraction of them in the hearing last week. The responsible thing to do is to deny this project due to the obvious environmental concerns and the ever-changing threats of future, more violent storms will have on our coastal environment, and considering the well-documented sea level rise. Please consider the points I've made and the recommendations of your own environmental advisory board. And also, I would like to say that with regards to variance, there is no precedent. Variance is done case-by-case basis, and you can confirm that with the city attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, thank you. Paul Gaba, 21636 Wago Circle, number 22E, Boca Raton, Florida, United States of America. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Boca Raton City Council, city staff, all the tenants today, whether online or in person, and those online including high school students from Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, I understand. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm not really sure I can add much more to the lengthy and eloquently stated list of grievances and concerns voiced before you this evening by my fellow residents in Boca Raton. I believe the opposition speaks loudly for a plethora of quite viable reasons. So, in the grand scheme of things, I turn to the wise words of the most famous half-human, half-vulcan Spock in Star Trek II: The Wrath of Khan. The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few or the one. This utilitarian view is quite logical in assessing the situation before you today. The needs and voices of the many you have heard tonight and will hear in the future tonight show this to the case when reviewing the proposal in front of you. tonight show this to the case when reviewing the proposal in front of you. Thus, I urge a negative vote on the CCCL issue before you and hope the petitioner can return with a better, wiser concept that meets all the requirements that are placed before you and them by the city council, by policy, by code, by state law, et cetera. I believe we would love to see construction of a unit that meets all the requirements set forth by the state and the city, environmental and otherwise. Thank you very much for your time, and be safe out there tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all the cards I've received for this matter. Is anyone else wishing to speak? And if so, make sure you've been sworn in. If not, we'll swear you in. All right, last call for first-time speakers. All right, we'll now give anyone an opportunity, anyone who participated in the hearing, to cross-examine anyone else. Seeing no one take advantage of that, we will give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal. We'll have up to 10 minutes.
Thank you very much, and thanks to all of you. I heard Star Trek quoted-
Please address the council so we can hear you. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to also not turn my back to the, to the members of the community. And you heard them, I heard them, and there was a quote about the wants of the many. We live in a society where the wants of the many are respected in elections, but you're not sitting here as an elected official. You're sitting here as a quasi-judicial body, and the rights of one are what you're looking at. And a federal judge has already made it very clear that there is a right to build a home on these oceanfront residential lots, and suggested that the size of what was being sought in 2500 could be reduced. We have reduced ours so much beyond anything that was in that application. We're here, we're here not to appease the wants of the many. All of these neighbors, I understand, don't want to see a house. They want to go to their private beach that their communities own on either side, and they want to enjoy their private beach, which they gave up development rights, by the way, so that more units could be built and they could have a private beach. They want to go to their private beach, and they don't want to see what my client does with their private property. The idea that was $9,000 is ludicrous. They have no idea the financial terms between Azure and the bank. Millions of dollars, not, not, not $9,000. The notion that if you buy a piece of property that has a bundle of rights, then you can't avail yourself of the rights. This property came with the right to seek a variance. That's part of its bundle of rights. When you purchase that, that doesn't mean you give up your rights. It means you have the right to exercise your rights. So, to hear the, the spin that's put on the standards, there's a complete misunderstanding of what the law requires. The special and unique conditions that exist, which are peculiar to the applicant's case and which are not generally applicable to the property located in the zoning district. The zoning district is a large residential zoning district. What is peculiar is, in this case, there was a CCCL law passed after they were platted in the zoning district. That is a unique condition. My client didn't cause that. The literal interpretation, the special and unique conditions are not directly attributable to the actions of the applicant. Buying the lot did not cause the residential lot to be platted before the CCCL line was enacted.
Mr. Sweetapple, please just move the microphone a little more toward the center. Thank you.
Sure. So, so it's clear that my client did not cause the special and unique condition by buying the property. The special and new condition is it's residentially zoned, but it has an overlay on it that is contrary to the comprehensive plan designation that it shall be a residential lot, and the zoning district. Buying it did not create the condition. Buying it gave whoever owns the property the bundle of rights that the law allows, which federal Judge Smith made clear, was the right to build a home. So we can keep litigating ad nauseam and ignoring federal courts and act like that hasn't happened. Everyone that got up here, every neighbor who got up here acted as if, oh, there's really no right to build here. We don't want a home here. This is what we want. This is what we want to see. We want to ignore the private property rights because we want to see this. We don't want to see this. We had a contractor tell you that the world's going to end if you follow the FDEP guidelines to build seaward of the coastal construction line, if you follow the Florida Building Code, which tells you how to build seaward of the coastal construction line to build something that withstands a 100-year storm. So someone coming up here and telling you, oh, the world's going to end, when the law tells you what to do and how to do it, is not quasi-judicial evidence. Just like at the Environmental Advisory Board, we heard the same thing. People coming up and giving their opinion as to what they want. And, and what everybody misunderstood in this entire report is that Dr. Rosenko's report in 2018 was with regard to the last application. That's why all of these things were done, so that the recent report from 2023 says the past EAB submittal in 2017 and this current submittal addressed the potential impact and mitigation of the sea turtles. So, that's why we put in glass that's, that's more protective than the city requires or the state requires. There isn't one window in your city that you're requiring, and all these condos, when they get new glass, not one of those windows that have been replaced on the beach is as environmentally sensitive as what we're doing. So maybe you're going to now go in and every time someone changes all their windows in the condos that are seaward of the coastal construction line and make them use our glass because you haven't. But we're doing it regardless. The vegetation, nobody has carefully read this. The vegetation we're removing is exotic vegetation that you want removed. And what are we doing? Spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to remove exotic vegetation, and we are replanting what will be the only native dune in the city, protecting the one species that happens to be native. So, there hasn't been one word uttered by one speaker at the EAB or here that in any way rebuts your staff's careful analysis and protection. Not one word. So, I know it's hard as an elected official. You're wondering, why in the world am I serving as a judge? Well, in the, 40 years ago, the Florida Supreme Court and the Snyder decision said that property rights, zoning rights, are no longer going to be political, and you're going to be able to just, you know, support somebody or not support somebody. They are property rights. And we're not going to deny people property rights based on how neighbors feel or what they think. We're going to do it based on evidence. Your staff has spent five years coming up with the most arduous standards with regard to turtles, planting, construction, no construction, no excavation during turtle season, every possible protection well beyond what the state is requiring, well beyond what any municipality has ever required. Everything we're doing is monitored, and even after my client has finished, there are all of these standards that are in place to make sure that through restrictions, these special lights that are being put in so that there's no light on the beach, the planting, everything that we're doing is monitored and restricted ongoing. So, I understand the neighbors don't want this. I understand they don't want to see it on someone else's property. I understand they don't like it, but your staff has given you the evidence. It's unrebutted. You're sitting here as judges. I've, I've provided to you, and I've asked you to take notice of the rulings of Judge Smith and the other judges. The federal court's already said a home can be built. The only issue for you here is, have we met the requirements of the variance? We clearly have, your own staff says we have. No one has shown anything to the contrary. And I know it takes courage, and I know you're elected officials, but I do believe and trust that you will undertake to serve as the Florida Supreme Court has directed you to serve as quasi-judicial officers who base your decision on evidence, not opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Sweetapple, hold and stand by, please. Council members, any questions? I'd have just a couple for Mr. Sweetapple. Dr. Stoddard's presentation made a reference to 2600 North Ocean LLC. Is that the same, you've mentioned Azure, is that the same entity? Your-
Yeah, Mike, when I said beneficial owner, Azure owns 2600.
Got it. Is anyone from that entity here today? I know they may not testify.
Mr. Brian Grossberg is here. Richard Castor is also an owner. He is on his 40th anniversary in Italy. His timing was not under his control. So, they, yeah, the owners of Azure are here. They are the beneficial owners of the property through an LLC that they acquired.
Thank you. I understand. Staff's conditions include preserving the Beech Star species of tree there. Are there any Beech Star, can you just talk more about, you said there were invasives on the property side closest to A1A. Are there any natural plantings there now?
No, none of the natural, none of the Beech Star are going to be impacted. They've all been, they're, they're not impacted. The only things being removed are exotics, and I think it's discussed in the report.
Okay, all right. That's all my questions. Anyone else? All right, thank you. If there are no further questions, we'll close the public hearing. We have an opportunity to ask questions of staff, of course, if anyone has any. If not, oh, Ms. Knackless.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In relation to reasonable use and minimum variance necessary, how is that established? How do you establish the minimum variance necessary?
The variance that's being considered by the council is exactly what the application is, including all components. It's the, it's the drawings, it's the conditions in the resolution, it's the, the environmental assessment, all the data and analysis behind it. Reasonable use is not something that is, you know, measured like, like a setback, like a 25-foot setback. It's something that requires evidence, analysis, and ultimately judgment as to whether that criteria is met or not. Our recommendation, we've assessed it, we've analyzed it, we've taken into account the, everything that's been given to us by the applicant and everything that our expert staff members and consultants have provided to us, and we have made the determination to recommend that it is the minimum variance necessary, and it's a reasonable use. Clearly, that is, you know, something that the council must make a determination on.
Does staff have sizes of other single-family homes built seaward of the CCCL?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Does staff have sizes of other single-family homes built eastward of the CCC, CCCL?
Are we talking historically or houses that exist today? What are, what's the question exactly?
Historically.
Okay. So there, it's, there's currently a duplex that's at 2330 North Ocean Boulevard. According to the property praiser data, one half, one side of the duplex is about 2,000 square feet, the other is about 889 square feet. There was at some point in the past, based on the research that we've been able to do, which is, the records are not perfect, but we've done our best. At some point in the past, there was a home at 10 South Palmetto, South Palmetto Park Road was the address. That's on A1A, just south of Palmetto Park Road. Based on our records, there was a home built there in 1940 that was about 2,500 square feet. At 400 South Ocean Boulevard, the, the plans that we've been able to find, that's been since demolished, the plans that we've been able to find, the, the plans are very difficult to read, but believe that it's indicating about 4,200 square feet. And then there were, apparently from the records, at some point in the past, again, they've been demolished, there were three single-family homes between 2,400 and 2,420 North Ocean Boulevard. It appears one of which was about 4,800 square feet, one was about 871 square feet, and the third one, I couldn't, not find any record of what size it might have been.
Okay. So they were all built and most of them demolished?
I believe just the duplex remains of those.
Right, okay. Was there an opportunity just to, that existed to discuss a condition to reduce the size of this project?
So, the size of the, of the structure has been, in terms of height, in terms of mass, in terms of square footage, all of that, has been a subject of our review the entire time this application has been under review.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that's what you mean by condition, or if you mean imposing a condition now to reduce the size further.
To reduce the size further, was there any discussion about that, or was this the minimum size that the applicant would agree to?
So the applicant makes proposals, and we respond to them, and we do make suggestions, and obviously suggesting that it be as small as possible, or as small as reasonable, I guess is probably a better word, was certainly a theme throughout that. We made an assessment that the applicant has proposed here, something reasonable, and so we didn't discuss a condition to further reduce it. I, I think that a, such a condition would be difficult to deal with because we have drawings that indicate the size of the building. A, a building that's substantially less in terms of square footage would be a different building with different drawings that would need to be re-analyzed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shad, just a follow-up. You talked about the square footages of those other buildings. This is a unique footprint at, at ground level. Have you done any analysis of how this compares? Because it would seem to be less than some of the other ones. I don't know if you know offhand.
Just in terms of the, the footprint itself?
The footprint, because of the cantilever design, right.
Certainly, we can, we can find that quickly, but it'll take a couple of minutes to, to find the footprint.
Other questions, council members? Mr. Wigder?
Thank you. Thank you very much. With respect to the conditions that staff recommends, Mr. Shad, could you talk briefly? You said they might be different, or similar, or less, or more than what the DEP, the Florida DEP requires. Can you talk a little bit about how these conditions develop? They seem very technical in nature, so I would like to understand a little bit more the basis for the creation of the conditions. I, it's on slide 12 that I'm looking at right now.
I'm sorry, slide 12 of the staff-
Slide 12 of the staff analysis of the current proposal. It lists several conditions.
I think somebody's going to help me out maybe with the-
I think somebody's going to help me out maybe with the, with that slide.
That's the one.
So I can talk a little bit about the first one. Essentially, what we tried to do in concert with the applicant was find what, what was out there in terms of what is being manufactured. And this is what we found was the best that was out there, in terms of transmittance. The second, the second one is, I would say fairly obvious, you know, due to construction outside of sea turtle nesting season. The third one, I believe, was derived from guidelines that are issued by the, what's the agency called now? Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, something to that effect. I'm going to invite David Anderson to come up and talk about maybe the sea turtle lighting plan one, if you're able to do that. And maybe the tree pruning plan as well. And again, the pre-construction requirements, when we think about the site that we're talking about, and how construction would actually be accomplished, and the environmental sensitivity of this site, it's just, I wouldn't say it's maybe common sense, but it's something, if you understand the, again, the sensitivity of the site, and what has to happen to actually make a structure happen, and how those two things, you know, you try to minimize the negative environmental impacts, that, yes, we want to know in great detail, even more so than on most projects, how that's going to occur. So that's the logic behind that one.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm David Anderson. I'm the Sea Turtle Conservation Coordinator at Gumbel Animal Nature Center. So if you have a question.
You were sworn, Mr. Anderson, right?
Excuse me?
Were you sworn in?
Yes, I was sworn in.
Thank you.
So if you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I can elaborate a little bit on what he was referring to, particularly the fact that all lighting needs to be wildlife-certified by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, being that it's fully, full cutoff fixtures, light pointed downwards, amber in color, and no light trespass whatsoever towards the beach, and no light visible from the beach, or no light reflecting off of a wall or a window that is also visible from the beach. So those two bullets up there, the 31% visible light transmittance, meaning only 31% of the light coming in from interior of the building can be seen outside of the building onto the beach, that is a minimum that we asked, but we would certainly, would be great if it was lower than that. There is, you know, I think some windows that are out there that are lower than 31%. But nonetheless, 31%, I know our code asks for 45, so we decided 31 was sufficient. And according to the recent Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission research, 31% is the maximum allowed in sea turtle free animal lighting. The, back to the sea turtle lighting plan, once again, as Mr. Shad pointed out, the angle of all light being emitted away from the property, and that's what we saw in the plans when we reviewed it as staff.
Thank you. Mr. Shad, just one last question. Are there any additional conditions that you think are required here to preserve the environmental sensitivity of this proposed project that may not have been proposed as yet?
Before I say that, I just want to point out, this is a, this is a sort of a partial list that's on the screen. There's a lot more conditions in the resolutions. I just want to make that clear. So we have recommended all of the conditions that we feel are appropriate. We have been as extensive and as thorough as we could possibly, as, as we could. We did our best to be as thorough as possible in these conditions. If there was another condition that we thought should have been in the resolution, we would have put it in the resolution.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Anderson, could you stay there for a moment since you're already up? One of the speakers referenced your 2021 report and your analysis. Can you confirm your analysis has changed?
Well, I think there was a, Dr. Rosenko submitted comments in 2018.
Right.
In 2019, maybe. And then after he retired, I submitted comments that I signed off on in April of 2024, I believe. And the concerns are always there. You cannot build on a beach without, without having impact on sea turtle nesting activity. But the most recent proposal, or the most recent construction plans, decrease the amount of impact, but there's still impact. So I don't know what, if you're asking that, or the fact that, yes, I am one of the authors of the, of the sea turtle information in the, in the staff report.
Let me ask it this way. So first to clarify, you did not review the prior submittal that was around in 2019, or anything other than the current building that's been proposed?
No, I did review. I didn't officially review it as a, as a staff member and submit comment, but yes, I've been working both her tons of beaches for 18 sea turtle nesting seasons, so, and I worked with Dr. Kurt Rosenko for 12 of those.
Right, but you have less concern now with the proposed development with the conditions that staff has put in the development order than existed in 2019?
There is less concern, simply because the building is smaller, less glass, less square footage, et cetera, but there's still concern. But less concern, yes.
So how do you quantify that concern or measure it, then, I guess? When you say there's, there's concern, has this addressed the concerns about the impact? How has this addressed the impact?
Well, certainly addressed the concerns, but as I mentioned earlier, you, you have a building on the beach, there are going to be impacts to sea turtle nesting activity. There will be nesting females who are deterred from nesting because there is a light source coming, interior light, for example. There will be sea turtle hatchlings becoming disoriented because there is a light source. So impact is not, is not zero. There is impact. But yes, to answer your question, there is less concern from the 2019 plan to the 2024 plan.
It is mitigated.
It is mitigated.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Please, oh, please, Ms. Drucker.
And just a question, if and when this house is built, in the event, and I think this is more of a question for Mr. Shad, but, or whoever from that side, you know, they decide to change the lighting, they decide to change the fixtures, and that becomes a code enforcement issue, correct?
Mr. Brown, go ahead and answer.
I know the answer.
Yes, that would be a code enforcement issue. If there's any lighting that's not compliant, and this occurs fairly often, people will change out, the maintenance staff at one of the condos will change out some bulbs, and the turtle specialist informs them, hey, those got to be replaced with compliant lighting, and they get replaced.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I'm, I'm one of the first people to notice those changes, because I go out at night and conduct nighttime lighting surveys on our five miles of beach. So I see it from month to month, and I notice lighting changes, and I will report them, of course, to the authorities necessary, such as code enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions of anyone of staff? Thanks, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
All right. No further questions. At this point, probably call for a motion, and then we can have some discussion.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor. Tomasz, right here.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Did you still wish the nomination?
Yes, please. I was giving you time.
Yes, so the footprints, so the building is 19 foot wide, and then 99 feet long in length, so the total, the square footage is 1,892 square feet. That's at the foundation level, the basement level.
Right. And do you know how that compares to any of the other houses that Mr. Shad was talking about, some of which were larger? You may not know. That's okay.
So based on what I could see, again, there was one that was about 2,500. There was one that was about 4,200. There was one with a footprint was about 2,500, the total square footage was 4,800, and one that was 871.
Thank you. All right. Further questions? All right, council members, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 10420, 105, wait, where am I? Sorry.
So that's a motion.
1052024.
So it's a motion to adopt granting the variance? Is that correct? I'm not looking at it, so.
Motion to adopt granting the variance.
I think that's clearly stated. It was a motion to approve the variance with the conditions.
All right. Very well. That's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Further discussion?
It's a motion to approve the variance with all the conditions that staff recommended.
Correct. As proposed by staff with what? It was up to Q, so that's 16? No, 17 conditions, right? It was a whole series of conditions in the order of, in the teens.
I'm sorry, there was, there's a whole series of conditions in the resolution, yes. What was the rest of it?
Yeah, I was just trying, I didn't know the number.
I don't know how many exactly.
But in the teens, yes.
Yes.
It's a motion to approve with the conditions as presented. So it's a motion, and that's been seconded. Discussion? Mr. Wiger.
I appreciate everyone coming out. I appreciate all the personal opinions. I share many of them. I love our beaches. I love all the amazing things about the beaches. I was just there a couple of weeks ago cleaning them up with many of you, I'm sure. Like I said, our role in this instance is slightly different. In looking at this, we're balancing property rights versus the public good. We're also considering state statutes, the control line statutes. We're also considering the United States Constitution. And the United States Constitution states that if you take substantially the useful, beneficial use of a property away, that the owner needs to be compensated. So I take this very seriously, because certainly the city doesn't want to be put in that position to spend more. And when I say more, I was not a part of the council back then. But obviously, I'm aware of what's transpired. I've read the pleadings, so I could familiarize myself. And I know that as a city and as taxpayers, we have spent millions of dollars on this issue, private property rights versus what can be used here. So this is before us, and I've read everything that's been put in front of me. I've read every email. I've walked the beach as a citizen, and I've walked the beach once I knew that this case was coming before us, which I disclosed, to think about it again. Historically, it's one of the reasons why I brought it up in the beginning. Things happened that we're not, that no one expected to happen 100 years ago. The property was plotted, there are many residential owners. As Mr. Brown has said, and Mr. Shad, half the beach is developed with condos, many of them. Many of them are eastward of the seaward construction line, coastal construction line. And so what I think happened in the 1970s or 80s, when this coastal control line program happened, you know, I tried to go into the legislative intent of what was the legislator trying to do here? They wanted to protect the beaches, but also preserve private property rights. They couldn't just say no more construction. Many of you came up here and said that, well, this is no more construction on the beach. That's not what it says, because if they did so, it would be invoking the U.S. Constitution, and that would mean the state would have to pay for everyone's private property. So what they did is they came with this coastal control line program. And I'm reading very brief excerpts directly from the statute that I printed out. "New construction, as well as additions, remodeling, and repairs to existing structures, are allowed seaward of the control line. However, such structures, activities, unless exempted by rule or law, require a CCCL permit from the department, the State Department." And just one more excerpt. "It provides protection for Florida's beaches and dunes while ensuring reasonable use of private property." So again, I tried to put myself in, in the mindset of the legislative intent of this statute. What is it doing, right? What I think it's doing is, if this was not here, the owner would have the right to build a building in an R3 zone and just build a building with no other conditions, no specified conditions. What this does is give the city, and the state, and the county, if it's unincorporated, whatever, but it gives the city and the state the opportunity for us to very heavily scrutinize what's going to be built here, and to initiate very strict conditions to minimize the impact. There will, as, as the consultant said, there will be some impacts, but that they will be restricted to the maximum extent pursuant by law. And as the other gentleman said, this will be one of the most environmentally sensitive construction projects ever in the state of Florida, and this will be the most restrictive construction element in the state of Florida. So for those reasons, I think this meets the standard. You cannot take the private property rights away. The bundle of rights that Mr. Sweetapple says, they include the right to sell the property, and if the right to simply sell the property, to transfer the right, if the only way you could develop it is to hold it in perpetuity, then you have taken away a fundamental right of the property. So I don't, I don't find that to be palatable. Unfortunately, there were opportunities, and it's another thing that I brought up before, which is, for 40 years, the city had an opportunity to buy the property, rezone the property. Maybe it would have been subject to the Burt Harris Act, et cetera, but it would have been a different valuation at such time. The city had a conservation program where it bought thousands and thousands of feet of beach. This was not included in those purchases. So we have thousands of feet of beach, let's call it 50% of our beach that we've protected, that we own, that's public land, that truly can never be touched. And we have, let's call it, another 50% of the beach that is already built, or with the exclusion of just two pieces, I guess, or very, very small amount, two more pieces that could be built. And I think that is the trade that we have to be willing to take. And the millions and millions of dollars that we'll save in future litigation, or eminent domain costs, I would say, and ask my colleagues, let's take all that money that we're going to save, all that taxpayer money that we're going to save, and invest it in the resiliency of our, the beaches that we do own. But for, for those reasons, with hesitancy, I support the variance.
Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, if you know me, first I want to thank everyone that came out today. Thank you for being here. It's been a very long meeting. We had a lot of important business. But if you know me, you hear me often say, I really love this job. I love serving. It's been the biggest honor of my life to serve. And then there are days like today where I don't like this job as much, because we're tasked with a different, you know, type of different, different task, so you say. And I believe truthfully that both parties are going to be disappointed with the results, because I believe that- because I believe that the original party wanted a bigger house with more, you know, bells and whistles, and they accommodated to whatever our requirements were, which were the most strict for this property. And I believe that all the other people on the other side are also going to be disappointed, like myself. I'll also caution, I was not part of the 2019 council. I joined the council the year after, so I was not here for the initial. And like many of my colleagues, we've studied this, we've really looked at that. I love the beaches. Of course, we love our beaches. We love our sea turtles. I know more about sea turtles after taking this job than I ever thought I would know about a sea turtle. So I understand all of that, but to Mr. Wiger's comments, and you really laid it out very eloquently, thank you for that, we have spent over five years, and I say "we" as a city, and we have spent an enormous amount, not only time, but taxpayer dollars. And I truly believe that if we continue, and we, but we don't approve this, we will continue to spend more millions and millions of dollars, and I don't, and I don't think the results are ever going to be the way that we all want them to be. So I agree that, you know, that money could be put for better use, and I think that we've learned a lot of lessons from this process. I also wonder about the person building this house. Like, why would you want to be in such a property, in such a space with such, you know, controversy? But that's for them to decide, and that's their property rights. So for all of those reasons, and I agree, Mr. Wiger, disappointing vote for me, but I will vote to allow the variance.
Further comments? Mr. Thompson, Ms. Naklis, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, I, tonight was a, is a tough night because I also love our beaches and want to protect them as much as we can. And I also was not on the council. I read through everything. I read everyone's emails that were sent to me. I thank everyone who has spent hours with us here tonight. But we're also tasked with protecting property rights. And because of the CCCL, we do have the opportunity to impose the conditions for the variance, which staff came up with extremely stringent conditions. And I thank them for being so careful with all of those. And in reading everything that I read, I read that of all of our oceanfront land that we have in the city, 1,340 of it is zoned, the same zoning as this property, R3F. Over half of that, or about half of that, is already parks, so that, that won't be touched. Of the 670 remaining, over half of that is beach access for condos west of the CCCL, just like many of you live in. So you are enjoying the use of that beach access. And then of the 290 left, it's just the two properties that are left. So unfortunately, yes, we did miss some opportunities in years gone by, whether it was to buy this land, or to rezone it, or downzone it, or, you know, whatever we could have done was not done. So tonight, here we are. And we've heard Mr. Sweetapple say many times, they have the right to build. The judge has said they have the right to build. They do have the right to build with a variance, which is why we're here, see if we're going to approve that or not. I will agree with my colleagues who have already spoken that I do think that the standards have been met. And while it does not bring me joy to approve it, I think it is the task that we have been given, and given the evidence that we have been given, it is the right thing to do. So that's why I also will support the variance.
Thanks, Ms. Thompson. Anything to add? Okay. I wouldn't mind hearing from you. You were here in 2019 with me as well, so, okay, you can stay silent. Thank you all for coming. This is an unpleasant moment for me. This whole conversation over years has been unpleasant. In 2018, I was on record saying, based on the evidence that was in front of me, I would not vote for, to grant a variance. The record then was much more extensive. The home that was sought to be built was much more extensive, both homes. This is considerably lower. My hand is, I feel forced by several things. One, where a court is likely to go. Not so much by the litigation expenses and the incentive that might be there to, to limit them already, which is already on the table, by the way, but more where a court is likely to go. Litigation will continue. And yeah, perhaps the number of square feet can be whittled down, but is it one foot? Is it 100 feet? Is it 1,000 feet? I don't know. Eventually, they'll get to that number. And if we keep litigating and litigating and litigating, we're going to keep incurring expenses on both sides of likelihood, just based on how this court decisions have played out. That is very unpleasant. In 2019, the staff record was much more extensive. We had testimony based on the impact on turtles. We don't have that record before us today. Instead, we have a number of conditions based on our own expert that mitigate that concern And that's very significant and unfortunate for those who would like to say that the record's more full. It's not before us today. We are quasi judicial officers, and so there is a different burden. It's not a matter of just weighing what you feel like doing. There are private property rights involved, there are expenses to the city, and I have to be mindful of all that. I've been through the wringer on this. I was deposed in a related matter on this, and there's still litigation pending there. And I don't take the, I don't take any of these conversations lightly, nor do I take any of the concerns that have been raised lightly. They're all important ones. But there is a record before us, and I don't think we can reasonably just keep going back a third time and a fourth time and getting them to negotiate down feet by, foot by foot, feet by feet for something reasonable. They've got a 19-foot footprint at the ground level. It's hard, 19 feet in width, it's hard to reasonably say lower. And again, it's not like you can go back with the judge and just have a negotiation back and forth. By the time you get to a judge and get through another building plan, it's years and years of litigation and expense to taxpayers. I think eventually, we're going to get there. My colleagues have spoken already, but I too will have to grudgingly vote yes for this. And if anyone wants to say, you know, countering view, now would be a time to do it. All right. With that, Ms. Sinnes, please.
Naklis?
Yes.
Wiger?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Motion passes, four votes to one.
That concludes our quasi judicial matters. We'll move on with our regular public hearings. And we have none. We have no regular public hearings or settlements, so I'll open the Florida Public Requests. I have two, several cards on public requests. Adam Gold, Caleb Tolliver, Frank Guadagnino, and Jeff Lee. Please come forward, give your name and address, you have up to three minutes. Just wait a moment. We're going to have, the court reporter's going to get her microphones back. And we'll wait for the room to clear out, so just give us a moment, Mr. Gold. Or Mr. Tolliver, I'm sorry. Mr. Tolliver?
Yes.
All right, please.
Yes, hello. My name's Caleb Tolliver. My address is 616 Northwest 13th Street, Unit Number 13. And, you know, I'm glad to be here today. I'm happy for the opportunity to speak. I'm representing a group called Strong Towns Boca Raton, and it's a new, it's a new chapter of the organization of Strong Towns, which is offering, like, local conversations to make cities more resilient, better to walk around in, better multimodal cities. And what I want to do is, you know, me being a student at FAU for the Atlantic University, I'm a junior there, and I bike every day to go to school. So when I cross roads, like Glades Road, it is not very, it's not very friendly to people biking like me because there's six lanes of traffic I have to cross every time. And something I really want to focus on, I used to live on Northwest 20th Street, and that street has tons of people at night walking around on the sidewalks. And when you cross Northwest 4th Avenue, I believe that's the street next to the university, there's a lot of foot traffic that has, there's a lot of drivers that have no visibility of foot traffic on the crosswalks. And I don't want to bring attention to that, but people in the audience, Adam is a part of our group, and we have nine other members that we're looking to get more, and I just wanted to bring attention to our group. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have questions.
Yes.
First of all, God bless you. And no, in all seriousness, thank you for, for staying throughout this whole meeting to speak for one minute. I want you to know, I appreciate it. I think the people appreciate it, that it's that important an issue that you thought it was important to stay for four and a half hours. So I want you to know that I do take your issues very, very seriously. I share your concerns. Obviously, I bike there, too. It stinks that the bike trail just ends at Glades Road.
Right.
And crossing Glades Road is, is no easy feat, and it's not direct, and you have to go to the crosswalk, and you have to press the button, and you have to pray, and, you know, it, you know, so I want you to know, I appreciate those concerns. Is, do you, you talked about visibility on Northwest 20th Street. When you said "all these people," do you mean like just students or like walking around or these people?
Students, students walking around. So crossing the sidewalk, we, only crossing the crosswalk, right? So at that corner, there's like a visibility issue for turning right since there's certain lanes that aren't really, there's, there's a lane necessarily going across, and there's not like separated lanes. So it's just like one lane where some people turn right and go straight. So it's kind of hard to understand for drivers and people crossing.
No, I know the exact intersection you're talking about. Do you think if there was more light, like if there's more streetlight there, is it because of the bushes, like the way that they're?
Yeah, the bushes, I'd say the bushes, and like the way the intersection is designed. So I was thinking, some of us, we're talking about, and this wouldn't even cost that much. You just use, you know, things like cones to just try it out, but maybe a roundabout would work over there. That's the only thing I could think of, but that's just off the top.
Well, thank you for your concerns, and hopefully, you know, we can meet up after, we'll schedule a meeting or something like that, or get, get staff involved to meet with you and your group to hear some of the concerns because they're important, and certainly, I'm sure you share, many of the students share the same concerns with you. So thank you again for coming, really. I appreciate it.
Yes, thanks so much. I actually love staying here for the whole time. I was able to learn how this works, but I appreciate the opportunity. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Hello? My name is Adam, Adam Gold, from resident of 320 Plaza Real, Boca Raton. As Caleb mentioned, I am also a member of Strong Towns, and I will be echoing many of the sentiments. Strong Towns is a nationwide organization that advocates for less car dependency, more investment in alternative methods of transit, and zoning codes that allow for mixed-use We argue for these changes because they are more economical for cities, citizens, and small businesses, and improve the quality of life for all. They encourage everyday people like us to team up with like-minded neighbors and advocate for these policies in our own cities. Strong Towns Boca specifically is only a few months old, but we're here tonight to introduce ourselves, share our ideas, and let you know that we are excited to begin working with you. And thank you.
Thank you. By the way, do you have a website or anything?
Strong Towns Boca has a Facebook group. There is a Strong Towns, I forgot the, but they, do you have an organization, no website? Yes.
Thank you. Looks like it's on, Strongtowns.org. Ms. Drucker.
Thank you so much for sitting through here. So maybe last year, I met with some of the Strong Towns from, like, the actual organization, and I knew that we're going to have an interest in coming down to Boca, so I'm glad, A, that you stayed through the meeting, so thank you both for being here. B, thank you for starting the chapter. One of the recommendations, so I'm very familiar with your organization. I get the emails, and I also, like I said, I met with some of the folks, and I was just pulling up my email to make sure that it was the right organization. One of the recommendations I would also give is, I believe the community advisory board is going to meet soon. It's one of our boards that we have here for young adults, for all ages, but really, we kind of developed that for young adults. And I know they're looking for certain people to come and speak. I know they've reached out, I know they've reached out to me to have some, some input on some of the transit and mobility things that I work on. So you might want to go on our site or follow up with us after. You might want to participate in some of those meetings. I think that you might get to learn a lot about the city and our initiatives, and also with fellow peers. So food for thought. Thank you again.
Thank you.
One more, one more comment that I wanted to make here, and thank you both again for staying. You're looking to give some input. The League of American Bicycleists is conducting, conducting a survey that's open until October 15th, and the city of Boca Raton is looking to upgrade our status from bronze to gold. And this is a great way to, it's, the survey takes you about 10 minutes. It's, it's about 25 questions, and they go into depth on, on a lot of the questions. So it's a great way to give specifics that hopefully, some of that feedback will go to our, back to our city also. So please go on there, and also to attend the pedestrian bicycle advisory board committee meetings as well.
Oh, we have been. And, uh, League of American Bicycleists?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Please.
Also, currently, because Glades Road is an FDOT road, so it's, the lot, it's a state-run road, they're working under 2050 Vision Plan. I had the opportunity, I think I shared it in yesterday's meeting, to listen to the FDOT presentation last week in one of our legislative policy committee meetings that I sit on, on transit and mobility. You might want to go on there and do the survey, and if it's nine or 10 of you, put in your input. The input counts. I know it sounds like far away, but that's the way these projects work. If you put the work in now, you know, 10 years, five years, two years from now, or 20 years from now, these things start to be implemented, and some sooner, obviously, but you want to get your input. And then also, Ms. Naklis and I both sit on the Transit Planning Agency for the county. They're doing some great work, and there's a lot of stuff on that website that could be very educational for you, so you might want to check that website as well.
Thank you. What was the name of the meeting from the, oh, go on?
So you have the community advisory board, and you can look up on our website, on our actual city of Boca Raton website. The Vision Plan is through the FDOT, so Florida Department of Transportation. That's our, the Vision Plan, I think it's the 2050 Plan, and then the Transit Planning Agency. So it's a Palm Beach County Transit Planning Agency. If you forget all of that, I, you can, we could, we could connect after, and I can direct you to the links.
All right, thank you.
And by the way, yes, no, thank you, you can have a seat. Thank you. You didn't put your email address in for, when you go to the website, why don't you shoot us at all an email? We can continue those conversations, too. So, all right, very good. Frank Guadagnino or Jeff Lee?
Yes.
Yes, I'm speaking behalf of Frank Guadagnino. I'm Jeff Lee, 3070 South Ocean Boulevard, Manalapan, Florida. This is a case very similar to one you just heard for the past four hours regarding property rights, and it's a variance request that Frank had made for a piece of property he's owned for 30 years in Nob Hill. And the staff accepted his application, they accepted his fees, they reviewed it, and they have rejected his application. And there is, according to the code, that says there's an appeal process that may be presented to the council. However, the staff has said that that does not exist. So I'm here to inform the council that if we could focus on that, maybe we can make some progress on this issue of, for his variance, and also avoid some time-consuming litigation or anything else that's not worthy. I've also been asked to read a letter that Frank had written, and I'll read it to you now, unless you have some questions. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Frank Guadagnino. I reside at 2201 North Seacrest Boulevard in Boynton Beach. I've owned the property located at 392nd Northwest 42nd Street in Boca Raton, which is currently vacant. Several years ago, I was approached by a buyer who wanted to purchase the property and build a house for himself and his family. Because the lot is narrow and a new house cannot meet SEPC requirements, after discussion with city staff, an application for variance was submitted. During the review by city staff, they claimed that the lot was not designated on the plat of Nob Hill for a single-family home, and suggested submitting a plat amendment followed by a variance. Subsequently, staff issued the opinion that the property was not platted for a single-family development, development within Nob Hill. for a single-family development, development within Nob Hill plat exceeded the allowable density, and the variance application was not allowed to proceed. In August of this year, I sent a letter to the deputy city manager and copied the council, asking for the density to be calculated based on the Boca Hills plat, a larger area from which the Nob Hill development was plotted. This request was denied by the deputy city manager, and when I contacted the city staff to submit an appeal to this determination for hearing by city council, that was denied, and I was told that the determination by the deputy city manager is not subject to the appeal under the city's code. So I'm here before you this evening, despite my attempts to work with staff and to seek reasonable remedies to what I consider incorrect determinations. I have been administratively denied and prevented from having my case heard by either the Board of Adjustment or the city council, and I have been administratively deprived of due process. I will point out that the city has designated the property as residential on its future land use map and designated it residential on its zoning map. In addition, although the staff claims that the property was not designated for single-family development on the Nob Hill plat, none of the properties that the city has allowed to development for residential are designated for the residential on the plat.
Could you please conclude, Mr. Hill?
And the city has permitted the entire Nob Hill to be developed despite the fact that it exceeds the allowable density under the comprehensive plan. This area is a residential neighborhood.
Mr. Lee, could you conclude, please? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call for public requests. We close the time for public requests. Thank you. We'll turn to introduction of ordinances. Ms. Sins, would you please read the title of ordinance 5707?
Ordinance number 5707, an ordinance of the city of Boca Raton amending the personnel rules and regulations to amend the benefits provided to city employees, specifically with respect to including the day after Thanksgiving Day as a city legal holiday, providing for severability, providing for appeal, or providing for inclusion in the city's personnel rules and regulations, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who would like to introduce us?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 5707.
Thank you, Ms. Drucker. Would you please read the title of ordinance 5708, Ms. Sins?
Ordinance number 5708, an ordinance of the city of Boca Raton considering an amendment to the future land use map, flum of the comprehensive plan by re-designating certain property consisting of approximately 0.034 acres, generally located at 7900 North Federal Highway, from commercial C to residential low RL, subject to conditions, providing for revisions to the flum, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who would like to introduce us?
Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce ordinance number 5708.
Thank you. Ms. Sins, would you please read the title of ordinance 5709?
Ordinance number 5709, an ordinance of the city of Boca Raton considering the rezoning of certain property consisting of approximately 0.034 acres, generally located at 7900 North Federal Highway, from motel business RB1 to single-family residential R1B, providing for the appropriate revision of the zoning district map, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who would like to introduce this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce ordinance number 5709.
Thank you. Ms. Sins, please read the title of ordinance 5710?
Ordinance number 5710, an ordinance of the city of Boca Raton considering for an approximately 0.21 acre property, generally located at 7900 North Federal Highway, a universal conditional UC amendment to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, pursuant to Articles, pursuant to Article 6, Chapter 23 Code of Ordinances, from residential low RL to commercial C, subject to conditions, providing for revisions to the future land use map, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who would like to introduce this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 5710.
Thank you. And Ms. Sins, 5711, please.
Ordinance number 5711, an ordinance of the city of Boca Raton considering for the approximately 0.21 acre property, generally located at 7900 North Federal Highway, a universal conditional UC rezoning from residential district R1B to motel business district RB1, pursuant to Article 6, Chapter 23 Code of Ordinances, subject to conditions, providing for the appropriate revision of the zoning district map, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who would like to introduce this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance 5711.
Thank you. And Ms. Sins, 5712, please.
Ordinance number 5712, an ordinance of the city of Boca Raton amending Chapter 12 Pensions and Retirement Code of Ordinances, Article 5 Executive Employees Retirement Plan, to include in Section 12-162 the legislative adoption date relating to benefits for employees who transfer from either the general employee's pension plan or the police and firefighters' pension plan to the executive employee's retirement plan, providing for severability, providing for appeal, or providing for codification, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who will introduce this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce ordinance number 5712.
Thank you. That concludes our introduction of ordinances. We'll turn to resolutions and other business, which we have none. No cause of judicial public hearings for variances and appeals. Although in retrospect, number six, number 10 really was number 16, but okay, it was a variance. City manager reports and recommendations, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to inform the council that you all recalled a few days ago we had a failure.
Thank you. You may recall that a few days ago, we had a failure of the bridge on Cypress Way in Commune Gardens. Staff is undertaking an emergency procurement to repair that bridge. I'm just informing you today, you will get formal notice once we get to the next agenda, but we want to proceed prior to that agenda. The estimated cost of the repair is between $2 and $4 million, and we expect the work to start by the week of the 21st, take four to six weeks to complete, so it should be done by early to mid-December with that repair. It's not, we have a specialized bridge firm and design firm, and the, this is an emergency procurement in accordance with Section 3-106 of the city's procurement code. Item number one, on emergency preparedness in relation to Hurricane Milton. Just to remind everyone that this week, garbage collection, the Thursday people will be collected on Friday, the Friday people will be collected on Saturday. Next week, because of the Columbus Day holiday, the Monday collections will take place on Tuesday, and the Tuesday collections will take place on Wednesday. And also, I want to take a moment of privilege, based on history of the city, to correct something that was said in the public hearing tonight about the coastal construction control line variances in the past. It was stated more than once that no other property had been granted rights to build new developments seaward of the coastal construction line since the line was created, and that is clearly not the case in the area where this property that we, the subject tonight, where four condominiums built after 1973, all of which required a variance. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. May I ask you a few questions on that first? On the entities with whom we're planning to contract for the bridge replacement, are they repiggybacking off some state contract or something of the like?
No, we are using WGI, whom we have used in the past, and Conan Graham, who did the Brant Drive Bridge replacement that you all are probably familiar with.
I know it's an emergency replacement. Do you feel comfortable with the cost, given the situation?
Yes, given the circumstances, yes.
All right, thank you. And just a question on sanitation, maybe more information will come out. The email that went out this evening about city sanitation said Thursday service will be picked up between Friday and Saturday. I don't know if you have an answer now, but is there any chance that anyone on, because it's, actually, it's, so it's a change, Thursday service will be picked up between Friday and Saturday, and Friday will happen as scheduled?
That is not correct.
Okay.
Thursday will occur on Friday, Friday will occur on Saturday. That has been confirmed with the staff.
Thank you.
What's the timing on that email, please?
Uh, no, 608.
All right, we'll clarify.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, question for Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mr. Drucker.
Given the nature of the bridge collapse, is any portion of the repair or replacement or emergency issue, is any of it insured? Is there any possible?
I am not sure about that, but if there is insurance involved, it will certainly be called upon.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Counsel, excuse me, first city attorney reports, deputy city attorney, Kayla.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, no report.
Thank you. I started on my left last time, so I'll start on my right this time with Deputy Mayor Drucker.
No report. Just be safe, and go on our website and get all the news. Sign up for all the alerts. They're giving a lot of good updates on Hurricane Milton. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reader?
Yeah, just briefly, very quickly, thank you everyone for staying. There's a couple new laws that are taking effect that are kind of appropriate, especially now. One requires flood disclosure. I didn't have time to print out the whole, you know, the whole legislative thing, but there's a disclosure for purchases that are going to be important. There are also grant programs for resilient communities for flood-resilient projects, which, you know, obviously, considering the storm out there. There's also federal resiliency programs. But given the gentlemen that stayed very late for the Strong Towns, there is a bill that passed that we've talked about, our colleagues and I, called the Alternative Mobility Fee, and it gives an opportunity for, it gives an opportunity for local governments that can have their own government fee schedule for mixed-use interconnected multimodal transportation systems. This law was passed almost unanimously by the Florida Legislature. It went into effect October 1st. Obviously, it's something my colleagues and I have been talking about, that it could be another revenue feature for us to devote specifically to the projects that you're talking about. So I thank you for staying again, because this is going to be something that I believe we'll be analyzing over the next several months to see how we can implement this into our comprehensive plan ourselves. So I appreciate it. We talked about the resiliency of our assets this week, our financial stability, the services. We don't want to build things twice. We consider this in our policy decisions. How else is it Boca resilient? We have an incredible workforce. We have numerous nonprofit charities, thousands of people that help this community. When there's issues of importance like tonight, people come out, they make their voices heard. If it's an issue of national concern, like the travesty of October 7th, we come together. We are united and connected, no matter what time it is. We support our community. Our first responders, they keep us safe. Our people, we feel safe. Like I said, given the events that happened a year ago and yesterday, I was really torn. I was really depressed, you know, as to some of the things that have happened. But like I say, when I see our community come together, and it has in so many ways, I feel, I feel that strength. I see that resiliency. And my feeling, like I said, no matter what time it is, is the resiliency that we feel in this community, even by people who have just reasonable disagreements, it's more than the stats that we can measure. It's the things that you can't. It's the community, it's the sense of neighborhood, it's that people are here for each other. There is a storm out there. There's a storm physically, metaphysically, out there, but united, I feel that we are so strong, and I'm so proud to be a part of this city, and its history, and its continued history, and the improvements that we're going to do together. So I thank everyone for staying and being part of this process. I thank my colleagues for doing hard work tonight. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Annapolis?
Thank you, Mayor Singer. I just wanted to, Ms. Drucker talked last night about our committee visit that we had up in Orlando, and I just wanted to let everyone know that I sit on the Development Code Compliance and Redevelopment Committee. It's my first committee, and a brief summary of the agenda for this committee's potential priority and policy issues that will affect our city of Boca Raton included discussion about the Live Local Act, which was passed in 2023, amended in 2024, and likely to be amended again in 2025, with possible focus areas on application of the act on planned unit developments, penalties for local governments that fail to comply with the act, restrictions on the use of moratoriums by local governments to halt projects, and clarifications on what qualifies as mixed-use zoning. There is also, we talked about national housing trends, including accessory dwelling units, vacation rental updates, impact fee updates, including discussion of increases in eligible uses of impact fee revenue, and finally HB 1621, which did not advance to the House floor in 2024, but there are plans to reintroduce it in 2025, and it relates to the unlawful demolition of historical structures listed on the National Register of Historic Places. We meet again on November 8th, and I'll have more to report after that session. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Singer, please. Sorry, can I, can I go back and add something to my report?
Sure.
Just because this all happened today, and it's just been such a long night, but I want the people at this table, because it triggered when you said that. So I know the city manager received a letter for I-Park. They've created, and I'm the I-Park delegate, and I can't remember who my alternate is, but a part of that I-Park, which is the intergovernmental agency, and I also sit on intergovernmental agency with Florida League of Cities, they've created a multi-jurisdictional issues coordination forum executive meeting that we've been assigned to, to help formulate in the next year the countywide transportation plan. And we are going to start meeting regularly on this, on this committee, which I sit on representing the city. Also, I've sent some of the information to Mr. Brown. We're going to need a staff member, hopefully, that we can also have attend these meetings. But the meetings will take place in the next year, but it is my job to come back at every one of our meetings, your possibly workshop, and start obtaining and sharing information and receiving the input of the council. So there's more to come on this. This literally landed on the thing today. Our first meeting is going to be October 31st. We're meeting October 21st and 22nd. So from here to then, you start thinking of, and this is countywide, not just Boca, and if I have more information, I'll send it to Mr. Brown to share with you all, to gather information, so that I'm prepared for my meeting on October 31st at 2:00 p.m. But I wanted to put it on your radar. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, please. Little follow-up to that. Mr. LaCassick is representative of the city to the Palm Beach County City Managers Association, which is providing input to the county on the transportation plan. Mr. Shadd is on a technical committee of planning and engineering staff that are working with the county on the development of the requests for proposals that will go out for a consultant to develop that plan. The I-Park committee and its subcommittee will be reviewing the consultant's work and communicating with the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right. Thank you. Just a follow-up from yesterday. We had our discussion at CRA about retaining CBRE as a consultancy. I know we had a lot of things going on today. Is that still in process perhaps for this week? And have you had any further opportunity to think about getting them on board with the TOC generally, as we talked about in perhaps a shorter time?
Staff met with them this afternoon for about an hour and a half to discuss the TCAI portion of their engagement. It should be done this week or next, the same for the other. We're working on both at the same time.
All right, very well. Anything further? I saw your mic went on, Mr. LaCassick.
Nothing further. I was just going to add if I needed to.
Okay, thank you. This week or next? All right, I think early part of next week at the outside, perhaps?
That's what we're aiming for, yes.
All right, hopefully even earlier, but thank you. And I want to thank you, Mr. Brown and staff, for all the preparations we've had to do, even though the storm seems to be hopefully heading, we wish it would hope, we wish it would just disappear magically, but it's, until then, we'll hope for the minimal impacts everywhere, including here. But I want to thank you, because there's a great deal of preparation, even if we're not in the direct path of the storm. And as was said earlier, please continue to stay informed and involved. You can be prepared by going to myboca.us, Alert Boca, to sign up for alerts if you haven't already, and we'll continue to put out helpful information on what we're doing with schedule changes and the like.
And I, we are sharing the situation reports with council, so that you will be aware of the extent of work that needs to be taken, that needs to take place each time we have an event like this. And it is always our policy as staff to prepare as if it's going to happen, based upon the models that we see. And we will have some weather from the system. So it's better to be prepared than after the fact to say, oh, well, we should have shuttered the buildings. It doesn't take, we've perfected many of these things to the point where it just happens. And I commend to you all the quality of the staff that puts their efforts forward. It's really quite good that at the administrative level, we just sort of say, is everybody doing what they're supposed to be doing? And they say yes, and we know they're doing it. So it's very good in that respect.
All right, thank you. And then a reminder to everyone else, especially as schools and other facilities are closed tomorrow, take the lead from people who've been through the storm before. Try to avoid, be cautious if you're traveling, try to minimize your be cautious if you're traveling, try to minimize your exposure to the elements, and again, stay safe. Just to revisit our discussion earlier, sometimes the work of governance is not pleasant, you have to look at the long-term and what's best for the city, and I think some of us had to grapple with those choices too, especially given where we might be years from now. But in the meantime, we'll keep doing our best every single day, and thank you for being a part of our city. If there's nothing further to come before us, we are adjourned at 10:15. Thank you and good evening.